And live from Lewiston City Hall, it's Monday night.[10.11][10.11][laughter]
That's not as fun as Saturday night.
Too involved?
No, more like John Belushi.
Yeah.
Call this meeting of the planning board for the city of Lewiston. Monday, July 18th, is it 18?
20th.
20th, I'm sorry, July 20th. Yeah, I lost a couple, yeah, hard weekend, yeah, lost weekend. The 20th of 2015. Pauline, would you call the roll?
Bruce Damon.
Here.
Michael Markcott.
How's it?
Paul Mador.
Here.
Sandy Markey.
Here.
Norm Angtill.
Here.
Myself, Pauline Goodus is here. Absent is Darcy Reed, Walter Hill, and Kevin Morzak. And staff person that's here is Mr. David Hediger.
Thank you, Pauline. Under the circumstances, I will appoint Norm as a full voting member tonight, although this is a comprehensive plan review, so there will be probably no active motions, but we'll make that official. Dave, we were, I believe, on page eight of the implementation matrix?
Correct.
And is that where we're starting, or where we?
That's where we're starting.
Starting.
Yep, we finished page seven, we're on page eight.
Okay. All right. Obviously, some of the items on this are probably city functions, and some of them probably not necessarily. You know, preservation of the tax base through historic preservation, that's a, obviously that's a significant goal, and it would be, you know, obviously, in my mind at least, would be beneficial to save some of what we've got versus tearing it down. However, I think once somebody owns a property and they can't convert its use, I'm not sure whether the Historic Preservation Commission can do anything much more than delay the demolition, right, Dave?
I'm sorry, Bruce. Say that again.
As far as preserving the tax base through historic preservation, there is a Historic Preservation Board, but they have not ever been able to actually save a building, they've only been able to stave off the demolition.
That's correct, right. As long as a property owner goes through the appropriate provisions of the delay ordinance, that's all it does, is delay.
Right. They take the pictures, they prove it existed, and then they knock it down.
Correct.
Basically, yeah.
Although, I mean, if there's enough opposition, St. Joe's is a good example, where they were going to start that process, and there was a lot of citizen concern with that, and it was enough for CM to stop and try to figure out a way to save the building.
Although they didn't.
We'll see what happens.
Yeah, although they didn't save the rectory.
No. And that one wasn't protected like the church was.
Wouldn't that be the intent with any of these buildings, to see if something could be done to preserve them before letting them go?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I think one of the things that's unfortunate is, once they close, and it's been particularly obvious with the churches, is the first thing that happens is they sell off the windows. And the windows are really part of the real basic history of those things, which makes them architecturally special, and they just, there doesn't seem to be any mechanism for stopping the wholesale slaughter of the building prior to them abandoning it.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about this at one of the meetings, if we were aware, if someone was telling us about the windows, we would be stopping them because that's part of the facade of the building, and that should be taken care of.
How do you figure that? What gives you leverage to do that?
You need a permit for windows.
To take them out?
To take them out and replace them. So, that's why, because there may be an egress issue, so in a church, it's probably not going to be an issue.
I would be in support of preserving the windows because of the cultural value, but it seems like we're a bit schizophrenic here.
Yeah, we wouldn't necessarily keep them from taking them out, but it would beg the question, what are you going to do with them? At least we could have the conversation about it.
They'd have to work through a process, it wouldn't be, you know, very similar to what they did in New Auburn with the bells at St. Louis Church.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that process was.
What happened with the bell, did they take it up? They sold it?
The diocese took them out, and then sold them.
If they're designated as a historic structure, they wouldn't be able to take the windows out with it.
Yeah, it's not that you can't take them out, but you should be getting a certificate of appropriateness, basically, I don't know that we'd bring it through the same provisions as the demolition delay provisions, but you would be getting approval to do it, because, again, our building code talks about permits that are needed for the replacement or removal of any window.
So it would give the city an opportunity to buy them then, right?
Potentially, or at least.
Somebody like the bells.
I mean, they got $30,000 for the, I'm told that they got $30,000 for the windows at St. Patrick's.
It would give the opportunity for citizens.
It's a pittance, yeah, but they were the highest bidder.
That's fascinating.
That's what I understand, I don't have that, you know, as a testimonial, as a bit of an insider to that.
And something like that is, I mean, we either find out about it, or we don't.
And they were one, there were some of the oldest and more intricate windows, all handmade, and the process has now been, has since become extinct, it's a very rare process.
Church bells, I don't know that we could do anything about, because that's not necessarily part of the structure, so if somebody wanted to remove the bells or something like that, but anything to do with the facade, the exterior of the building's regulated.
So, would that be something that we would change in the zoning and land use code, Dave, that would require a permit for the removal of architecturally significant windows?
Uh, yeah, I mean, that's, all the historic provisions are in the zoning and land use code right now, so if there was a means to, like it says, a tougher stance on demolition delay, and more in strict interpretation of the evaluation criteria, absolutely, that would be something that, you know, the plan suggests that we work upon, so I don't know that necessarily stops somebody from doing it, but at least holds them accountable, maybe gives another person the opportunity to come in and come up with $31,000 to save the windows or something like that.
Well, it brings it into the light of day, like the St. Joseph demolition, it brought it into the light of day.
Right.
That's, that's all that's needed sometimes.
Is there any slated demolition for St. Joe's?
Not at this time, no.
Now, it's catch 22, because these buildings are deteriorating as we speak, there's no climatized environment in the winter, the summer, you know, humidity and heat, and all the elements that deteriorate a building from the inside, and that thing's been sitting empty for quite some time now, so it becomes a forebound conclusion.
The longer.
It can be.
Yeah, the longer.
If you've got mold and mildew.
That's right, the longer it sits there, the worse it's going to get.
And then, once you have this crisis, then they, then they haul over the wrecking ball, they haul for the wrecking ball. And that's, that's a, that's a real, do we have a delay, do we have a delay code? Do we have? How does that read?
Basically, you got 90 days before you can demolish a building that's deemed on the demolition.
Historical register?
Right. And they, as Bruce was suggesting, have to go through a recordation process, so you go in there and you basically photo document the historical significance of the building and whatnot, and basically, that, you know, gets, if it's on the national register, it's a much more onerous process than if it's just on the local.
The windows to St. Patrick's, I believe, went to Japan.
Yeah, I think that's what the article referenced.
Well, I heard that personally from.
Chances are, we're not going to just get them back. We're not going to get them back.
Huh?
We won't be able to get them back.
Oh, no, oh, no. No, I wouldn't think so.
So, would that be a piece of this implementation, Dave, that might be something that we could incorporate in the zoning and land use code, or that we could have more input as far as the architecturally significant features of historic buildings?
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, there's a number of things here that potentially address that, including that one about a tougher stance on demolition delay and strict interpretation, simplify and improve, that section of the ordinance isn't the easiest, not that any section of the zoning ordinance is easy to interpret, but the historic one is, it's been piecemealed over the years as well. So, yes, I guess that, you know, talks again about amending the land use ordinance to provide strong protections against historic archaeological sites. I mean, there's a number of things in here that we could, you know, use to interpret to help the city at least flag or bring these things to people's attention before they occur. The demolition delay was a good, I think Gil mentioned at the last meeting, that was the Continental Mill that triggered that, when they got rid of the hoopla on one of the towers over there, everybody was, that happened overnight, essentially.
Yeah. Okay. So, as far as restoring the canal system, I think the restoration is a top priority, I mean, I think there are things in the works currently regarding that, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's, whether or not we own it, we clean it up, we make it more accessible from a recreation or just an aesthetic perspective, those are all things that the city is looking at at this point.
Right. And Mill 5, well, yeah, Mill 5, we'll just leave it at that. At least from my mind codes, to, like, let's say somebody, they would decide to sell the canal system.
Norm, can you try to use your mic, because we are recording these.
Yeah. Is there anything that, let's say somebody would want to sell the canal system, whoever owns it, is there any way that has to be made public to the city, so that we'd have a clue as to what's going on and what's happening, so that it just doesn't get sold out from under the city?
We're part of the FERC license with it, so we would have to be advised somehow, because it still, it still has power generating capacity, and we're on that license.
Yeah.
So, if Brookfield Energy, they're the owners of it right now, if they were to sell it to Mike Markcott, we would have to be made aware of that. I don't know that we could stop it necessarily, but we would have to be made aware of it.
And other entities, like, let's say, a railroad station, or anything of that nature, you know, is there any way that the city has to be made aware of what's happening, so that we don't lose these historical sites?
I mean, a sale of something is a little bit more than academic, in the sense that
it's a transfer of ownership, but that doesn't necessarily threaten the existence of the canal, you know, per se, unless they intend on doing a little bit of backfill.
Right.
Currently, the FERC license that Dave referred to, the Federal, FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, because there are hydro, there are five hydroelectric stations associated with the, that are currently licensed to potentially generate electricity off from the water power from the canal, they, each and every one of them has to receive a periodic license review and relicensing. The only one that's currently even potentially active belongs to the city of Lewiston, it's called the Upper A, it's all the way down by Grimms, it goes down into Gully Brook. There is one that is embedded in the middle of Mill 5. There is, there are three others, one by the Red House, Dave, is one of them, one in Mill 2.
Talking cogenerate?
Well, it's hydroelectric power.
Co-generate, yeah.
Well, not co-gen, but hydroelectric, off of the canal system.
Right.
And what happens is that, under the FERC license, a certain amount of water has to go down the canal to allow for the generation to actually happen, under an agreement that was, that they were working on with Florida Power and Light, when Florida Power and Light owned the generating capacity, there was going to be a reduced amount of flow in the canals, which would allow Florida Power and Light, when they owned the, when they owned the water rights, before they sold out the water rights to Brookfield. It's all about where they run the water. The Monte Hydro Station, which is at the, which is at the head of the canal system, is a much more efficient and much more effective use of the water power, every cubic foot of it. So, what the deal was, was they were going to allow more water to flow through the Monte Station in times of low water. In times of high water, it's not really a big deal, but in times of low water, it becomes very valuable.
Yeah.
If I recall correctly, Dave, we had, the FERC license currently is 280 CFS in the canal system, and it's going to be reduced to like 75 or 80?
That's, yeah, that's what they were discussing, and I think that's being revisited.
Revisited.
Is that because of the availability, the availability of water?
It's the value of the water.
The value.
It's the value of the water. When you run water through a hydro station that has 30 feet ahead, you get X number of power out of it.
Sure.
When you run it through something that's got 75 feet ahead, it has a lot more, it has a lot more power to it.
Sure.
Just because of gravity. And the Monte Station, I believe, is 72, and I think at the Upper A, it's 28. So, the generating capacity, the value of the water passing through a turbine is significantly greater at the Monte than it is at the Upper A. So, that's, that's the difference.
But you also need a supply, you need water level, you need water table, and they don't always have that year round, do they?
Well, what happens is, at the low end, in low water, that's why the low water value is different than the high water value, when the high water value is, they're spilling it over the batterboards, and they don't, it's not nearly as valuable, because they have the full head capacity.
Yeah.
It's during times of low water.
Right.
When it has the real value, and that's when the restriction comes in, is.
That's what I meant by availability.
Yes, yeah, and that's, and that's the case, so. So, that's part of the whole thing that goes along with the, there are some problems with the gates, there's some problems with leakage in the canal, which will cost the city some amount of money to actually rehab the canals, so that they don't leak, because we only have a certain amount of water going down through the canals, you don't want to be losing it where you can't control it, you want to be able to send it where it needs to go. And there was also an analysis that showed that in times of low water, when it was hot, that there would be a period of time for flushing, so that you could keep the canals from going stagnant, which you don't want to recreate is the river effect in San Antonio, I don't know if you've ever been there, but the thing meanders down through there, and it looks pretty brown, like an open sewer at times, when there's no water flow through it. So, that was part of the problem, was wanting to sustain the quality of the water, and so there was, there was a whole, there was a whole thing that was designed around that to make that happen.
I want to ask David a question regarding the vulnerability, Lewiston's vulnerability to loss of resources like that, loss of historic preservation resources, is the city pretty vulnerable in terms of these assets that we consider to be valuable, but that we don't have a direct, city does not have a direct?
You mean historic structures, or the canals specifically?
Well, structures, yeah, mix it up, I mean, structures or canals, I mean.
If we will, I mean, we don't own them, we don't have control over them, the ordinance provides some mechanisms to slow that down, and encourage people to revitalize them, but, you know, in a tough economy, tough market, built, historic buildings are expensive to rehab.
Did the issue ever materialize regarding the purchase of the canal, wasn't there something?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
That materialized?
Yeah, yeah, and we've discussed it, I believe we're revisiting it now, because there's been some new information about who has rights to it, Auburn has an interest in the canal and the flows as well, so it's.
Auburn.
Yeah, it has to do with when Monte Hydro was built and whatnot, I'm by no means well-versed in all of it with respect to the negotiations and everything, but.
I mean, I would think as far as historic preservation, that this city has a compelling interest.
The canals are on the national register, so, I mean, if somebody wanted to go in there and fill them in, it's going to be a lot of work to do that. If somebody just said, I want to eliminate the canals, so they are, they are locally recognized, they are nationally recognized, so there's certainly that interest, but that doesn't keep them from deteriorating and falling apart and whatnot. Someone's going to have to take ownership of that, and right now, it's Brookfield.
It's what?
Brookfield.
Michael.
Dave, I probably could have asked this question on the previous sections, but on St. Bates Mill, Mill 5, having that there in the matrix, does that mean that there could never be a demolition of the building?
No, I mean, again, it's a plan, right? So, I mean, it's a goal, it's a, we should be working to save Mill 5 based upon the comprehensive plan. If we go through that whole process, and it determines that, you know, the community determines, the council determines, the planning board, historic preservation, whomever determines that it's not in the community's best interest, we can demolish it. Just because it's contrary to the plan, we've got to speak to it as to why, you know, okay, we're doing something that is in a different direction than the comprehensive plan recommended, but why? That's fine, we can deviate from that, but we need to speak to why if we were to do that. No different than if we're adopting ordinances and whatnot, because you could probably find another section in here that's going to say how it's in our best interest fiscally being responsible or something to not have that mill there. So, it's a matter of just hitting the right sections and making sure we speak to them.
Pauline?
Dave, addressing the hold and market on annual auction of foreclosed properties, I actually did research and went through the last 200 foreclosures in the city of Lewiston, two out of 200 are owned by a local bank.
Doesn't surprise me.
The mortgages are owned by a local bank. Most of the mortgages are owned by BO, Bank of America, Wells Fargo.
Walk over here, some of those other.
Out-of-state banks, who, in my experience, have been resistant to any sort of cooperation with people even attempting to purchase the properties, let alone, the city has demolished these properties and sent the demolition bill to the mortgage company, only to have the mortgage company pay the demolition cost, and then a year and a half later, ask what the condition of the building was.
Yeah, we got, we got that information.
So, I mean, unless there's some sort of ordinance that could force these out-of-state banks that they have to cooperate with that sort of thing, are we setting ourselves up to putting words on paper that look and sound real good, but in reality, we're never going to be able to do? I mean, two out of 200 foreclosures in the Lewiston area is just not.
Yeah, I'm trying to find where that section was, actually, because I think we commented on that.
182, yeah.
182?
Uh huh. And I can tell you the two banks that held the property, one was Anders Skogren, the other one was McKennick Savings.
Is it a function that maybe the local banks sell these off to these big banks?
Absolutely, absolutely, either that, or people are going through, mortgage brokers, and they're.
And then they go that way.
Then they go that way.
Yeah.
But it's just amazing that most local banks and credit unions do not hold on to these mortgages.
Yeah.
Yeah, and a lot of folks have taken second mortgages, or gone to the, gone to the, you know, they go online, they go to LendingTree, and, you know, Bank of America will cut the rate by two tenths of a percent, so they go with them, and they can't make them, then first thing you know, these out-of-state banks end up owning them, and, you know, and a lot of times, the local banks never even had a shot at it, which is, that's the nature of the global digital economy.
So, I'm just wondering, leaving this in here is just a feel-good?
I think it might be a feel-good, I mean, I'm guessing, you know, you know, this is another example where they're making reference to how it's worked in another community, a lot of these places, and I'm not sure about Buffalo, but the example Detroit, and I know Cleveland as well, they're dealing with tons of single-family homes, it's not necessarily commercials or multifamilies and whatnot, and a lot of them, the city ends up taking over, and so they have this, and that, page 185 makes specific reference to what you're raising, Pauline, talking about being in that process. It's kind of out of our hands at this point, I suppose the city could develop an ordinance that forces them to go to some type of auction, because not all of them do that right now. We don't see all of them, we're made aware of them, but we don't necessarily see them.
So, what, Pauline, the point she's making is that if there's a mortgage on the building, it precludes us from obtaining the auction, right?
Well, yeah, somebody stole loans, the mortgage on it, absolutely.
And it precludes us from auctioning it, so that, so that the city wants back taxes, right, generally?
Correct.
So, how does that resolve?
They're usually paying the taxes.
But the mortgage companies pay?
Yeah, otherwise, we'd be owning all these properties, we don't, these buildings we're demolishing, we don't own them.
Do we have a pool of property that has been foreclosed, that we own it all?
That the city owns.
You said of the 200, you have the two?
What you're not understanding, Paul, is that these homes are going for foreclosure for failure to pay the mortgage. What happens is, these mortgage companies pay the city. We have, and I'm trying to think of the address, it costs us $38,000 or $58,000 to demolish the home.
Sure.
They sent the tax bill, and it has some sort of additive, that it was for demolition. The mortgage company is so in a wheel, like a hamster, they just send out the checks, a year and a half after the home was demolished.
Yeah, I got that point, I got that point, but.
So, the taxes are being paid, so we don't own them.
But do we have any properties? So, you don't have any, you're not.
If we foreclose, the only way we would get them from foreclosure is by them not paying taxes on them.
Property tax.
And the banks continue to pay the taxes on them even after we demolish them.
Okay, okay.
So, they continue to own them, they're paying us probably more than half the time for the demolition of them, and they're continuing to pay the taxes on them. To Pauline's point, it's just too big a machine, they don't know what's going on.
Right.
It's just money.
They don't know where Lewiston is.
So theoretically, these are 200 lots that are not supporting the city?
The taxes are most likely being paid on them still. At some point, we could foreclose upon them if they're not paying the taxes.
And they may be vacant properties that are just sitting there, and they're just deteriorating, they've been foreclosed on, but no one's, no one is doing anything about selling them.
Right.
And they just keep falling apart.
Yeah, I mean, that's often, I mean, it takes so long, and a foreclosure happens, and it takes.
Go for a name.
You know, months or years before it even shows up on an auction.
Yeah.
And in that time, similar to the church, it just continues to deteriorate.
Right.
So, whatever value it had, it's just continually losing.
So, would this be a situation, Dave, where if the, if there was a municipal, let's say, salvage or savior fund, that if somebody ended up in foreclosure, that they could voluntarily bring this to the city, and potentially, the city could negotiate directly with the mortgage companies to, so that we don't end up with these blighted properties?
I don't know, maybe that's a program we could consider, I'm not sure, really, I mean, it's.
I mean, I'm just thinking that, you know, rather than have these, some of these, because some of these properties, when they first become foreclosed, aren't that bad, they're certainly salvageable.
That's similar to the programs now, where I think you have to have certain qualifications and whatnot, where the banks would entertain you approaching them, and you could get a lesser rate and whatnot, in effort not to foreclose on it. Some people are eligible for that, some of them aren't, I don't know what the requirements are, so it almost sounds like you would suggest that the city becomes that person.
Well, not necessarily, but I mean, but some sort of, I guess that's an education piece. People think they get the letter, they get the certified letter, and the bank, you're being foreclosed, get out, because you haven't paid your mortgage, they just, they don't see any way of helping themselves out of the situation, so they just, okay, and that's what happens. What?
A lot of banks don't want to help the person that's in trouble, because it's, the mortgage is guaranteed by the federal government, and they're likely to get more money just by holding on to a building that's deteriorating than to try to sell it off.
Oh, that's true, too, all these mortgages are insured, so if their house is insured for $200,000, the bank loses it, well, they're likely going to get whatever it was insured for, even though the thing's just wasting away now, it could be worth $100,000 in several years.
So, we've got 200 neighborhoods that are slowly deteriorating because of this?
That's just Lewiston, I mean, that's, this is a unique, you know.
I understand, but it's.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah, it is. It's hard to sustain neighborhoods and protect against blight when there's a distinct federal disincentive and a financial disincentive to help us do it.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure that there's much we can do locally to really, we're not big enough or wealthy enough to be able to overcome that inertia, I'm afraid.
Yeah, I'm thinking about what I heard today from Jeff Perrell, and that you have a number of vacant apartment buildings, obviously, and there was a management company going around today, they check on them month to month, just to make sure it's still secure and everything like that, and they went to the one property, and the doors are locked, checking the keys, and I got the right building and everything, and there's a bunch of drug dealers that moved into this vacant building, they changed the door locks on it, they put their own door locks on it, they got the electricity, put on their name and everything, and chances are, she's going to have trouble getting rid of them now, because she's going to have to go through an eviction process.
Squatters.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Which I thought was great that they changed the locks, that just somebody smart.
Now, now, these properties that fall into disrepair and get condemned and get torn down, you're still getting, what I've heard you say here is that because the mortgage companies are involved, that they're paying the taxes on the property.
Correct.
So, the city's not taking a bath on, at least the tax.
Not at all, and we thought we were going to take a bath on the demolitions, and we haven't on that yet either.
That's awesome.
And that's why the demolition account is in such good.
In shape, yes.
Shape.
Yes, much better than, I mean.
We ever anticipated, yeah.
No money in the land bank.
So Pauline has a distinct question, hold and market and annual auction of foreclosed properties. We don't even know where they are, when they foreclosed, so that's probably not a doable function.
We know when they foreclose. Gil mentioned that at the last meeting, too. That's something that actually our office was just made aware of within the last couple of months. The treasurer's office gets a notice from the bank as to when foreclosure is going to occur. We didn't know that, and they haven't been shared with us up until maybe two, three months ago. So now we at least get a copy of a notice that says this property is going to be foreclosed upon. All that really does for us is, okay, it's a flag, we know that, you know, Three Lisbon Street is going to be a vacant building here at some point, and we may have a problem on our hands. But it doesn't really rise to the occasion until it becomes a property, a distressed property.
You have to go through the process of finding out where to send the tax bill from now on.
Oh, yeah, and, and, and they just, they, again, it's, 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 we're dealing with a property on Hogan Road, and I don't know if the trash was removed there today, but they cleaned out a house, the bank cleaned out the house. And all the trash has been sitting on the sidewalk out there for at least a week. I think we're going on two weeks now. It's Bank of America, and we are hitting them now with a citation of eight hundred dollars a day. So we're over, we're over, we're in the, probably at the three thousand dollars now. If it was removed today, we kept it under three thousand, but if it's, if it wasn't, then another eight hundred dollar citation went out today.
Foreclosures, before you even get a foreclosure, again, and, and the only reason I know this is because there was so much animosity about the city having to use CD BG money for demolition. For a foreclosure to occur, usually the people have not made a mortgage payment.
For years.
Sometimes eighteen months, two years, so that, and most tax bills, if you have a mortgage, mostly your tax bills now, the mortgage companies want the tax bills going directly to them, because they use esc, take it out of your escrow. So the taxes get paid, the building deteriorates, and nobody makes them leave.
Yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah, it's crazy. I guess it's not a bad thing to leave in there. I don't know that it's how, how we would necessarily do it. I would hate to think we got into a situation where we actually had two hundred of them all at once type thing. If that was the case, then yeah, maybe it would be good to round all these banks up and say, let's have some, because you're, you're absolutely affecting the value of our community for all kinds of reasons. But I think it would be a challenge to, to make that happen.
And the one about municipally-backed loans to fund historic rehabilitation, there's costs associated with that, and there's no, there's no active funding source for that at this point, right, Dave?
Yeah, we have a facade grant program that you can certainly use and has been used for historic properties, but there's nothing specific at a local level for historic. And, you know, it talks about historic preservation and building rehab. It certainly exists for building rehab. Historic preservation is just another bonus or incentive for us to participate, but there isn't a program directly towards it. To your point, it's a great idea, but we need to come up with funds to make it happen.
And that would have to be an, once you start it, it would have to be an ongoing thing, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, it could be for a certain amount of time, like a, a three-year program that we're going to fund or something like that, you know, come up with certain caps.
Would there be grants from the, from HUD or somebody like that to participate in that?
Potentially, you know, State Historic Preservation, National Park Service, they're the ones that really provide the, the funding for that. I think, I mean, everybody tries to take care of the historic tax credits. That's the biggest tool out there now available to property owners, and that's at a state level.
Anything else on those pages, eight and nine?
Some of these items, talking about lists, I know they were asked for a list not long ago, of all the properties that the city owns for sale.
I will make that happen. I've, I've heard you guys say, that's probably the third time, I, I will make that happen. I will make that happen.
What would be nice is if a list is manufactured, that it's something that can be maintained with a monthly or quarterly update. I mean, doesn't take mu- I don't know how functional, I've heard the Hoisters about Ennergov, but these are things that Ennergov ought to be able to just pump right out, you know, with a little bit of proper code.
And I would think that where the planning board has to rule on any acquisition or disposition of property is every time we do that something could be added. That's a perfect trigger for it.
Yeah, when it's through a tax, that just happens. You folks don't see that.
Right.
But if we were to get rid of it, absolutely.
But, but Heather, but Heather sees it.
Oh, yeah.
So every time she sees one, she could add it to the list as well, right?
Right, yep. Well, and, and ultimately, that list is going through the assessor's office. That's how I'm going to get this information.
Yes. Okay. Page ten? Actually, if we go back to eight for a second, do we want to leave in save Mill five? Or do we want to just say, rather than save it, just support efforts to redevelop it? Different spin on it.
Different word would be nice.
You know, saving it just seems to me that that's a forgone conclusion, whereas support efforts to rehabilitate or, or restore it is, it's, it's, it's sort of the same goal, but it doesn't have the same, I guess, it's not as, as, as hard a word to, to meet that goal. You know, supporting it is, supporting the effort is one thing. Actually, just talking about saving it just seems like that's a whole other step that may or may not be in the city's best interest.
I'd support that change.
I was just thinking, it's a vocabulary. It could say, repurpose Bates Mill number five and/or site. Rep- what? To repurpose Bates Mill number five and/or the site, which means maybe the site without the building on it.
Oh, that's true.
Could be with the building, could be without the building. Because that ate an acre site. Something could have happened to that a long time ago, much as twenty years ago, and actually six years ago now since the demolition order was effective.
If you, looking back on page eighty-four, that's where this is coming from, maybe, so the history column in the matrix is basically the, the subject titles and the, and the plan itself. So maybe we, might, maybe something like possibilities from Bates Mill five is the, the, the heading. And to your point.
Really, eighty-four?
One eighty-four.
Try to be consistent. So if I recall correctly, when we talked about that, while there was some disagreement, people were okay with the, the tool here, just say to support the efforts and reuse, great, you know, most people support it. Whether or not it bears fruit or not remains to be seen.
So perhaps it was the same.
So, so.
Wording?
So not necessarily save, save, just support the efforts to reuse or to rehabilitate Mill five or the site. Like Mike said, I think that's maybe a, because even reuse of the building is not necessarily a forgone conclusion. After twenty-five years of deterioration, it's, you know, if we'd left one of these churches unheated for twenty-five years, it would be beyond, they would say, well, that's beyond saving. I don't see why that isn't exactly the same case with Mill five, beyond saving. So is that a change we'd like to make? Just change the wording there to get rid of the save Mill five and just some other verbiage that more reflects what was on one eighty-four? Yes, no, Paul? Yes, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yes, Dave, that's a recommendation to change that.
Do we have any suggestions?
Just, just to support, to support efforts to either rehabilitate a building or, or reuse the site. Or repurpose the site, Michael? Would you be happier with repurpose the site?
Yeah, either way, it sounds good.
Rehabilitate or repurpose the site?
Or, yeah. Okay. There's nothing else on that, on Mill five. We'll go to ten. So it talks about LA Arts. I'm not sure if this is the city's function to set up a clearinghouse for all the arts and related information. I think that that's probably better handled by, by an outside group, and I'll certainly take others' input on that. That somehow doesn't quite seem like a city function. Be in on that? Oh, yes, no?
Which bullet is that?
First one.
It's the first two, basically, Dave. It's the first two, basically, on ten.
Responsible parties are listed as city council, chamber, commerce, recreation, and public library.
Yeah, others should be, we, we need, I would absolutely suggest the board add, like, like it says LA Arts below that. And I don't even know if we make specific reference to LA Arts as much as, you know, local and regional art affiliations or something to that.
It affects all of it, the public theater, it affects the Franco Center, it affects Bates College, I mean, this, this, you know, the festivals that are held can compete against stuff that's going on elsewhere in the city. I mean, it's just, seems to me that some, and I don't necessarily think because, that that's a city function. I'm not sure that that should necessarily be in the comp plan. It's a wonderful goal, but I'm not sure that the city should be the one trying to drive it. Because I don't know who on staff would be able to even have any impact or be able to communicate all that.
Is it a new department? Is it a new individual within a department?
Well, actually, Misty Parker, right now, she's kind of been a liaison with the LA Arts at this point. Just keeping them in the loop of city initiatives and whatnot, and things that they're involved with, too. So there is some type of relationship to, to maintain there anyway, so people are just abreast of what's going on. It's not a decision-making capacity or anything like that. It's more, this is what the city's doing, and this is what LA Arts is doing.
Sandy?
There is city funding going to LA Arts, so I think that's why Misty kind of keeps abreast of everything, plus the Art Walk, which I think Bruce is right, though. It's, there's no department in the city that really has any purview over that. LA Arts helped form a group called, what are they called? Arts and Culture Lewiston-Auburn, and that's trying to gather some of the nonprofits together to try to figure out how to market. It's, it's been rough for them, I've noticed. I've sat in a couple of meetings when I was with the Film Festival. It's very, very, very difficult, and the reason this is in here is, at one of those meetings that we had with Brian, that was one of the heated meetings.
Yeah, it was.
Because many arts organizations, they, there's a little bit of misunderstanding as to why does LA Arts get funding when public theater doesn't get funding from the city and, you know, so on and so forth. Franco doesn't get it. So something should be coming from them for that. They put on the Art Walk, so there's, there's all kinds of different things they do. They were going to do kind of a clearinghouse, but at the same time, they don't have enough funding to do that or enough staff to do that. So I think this is why it was brought up. Brian could see that there would be certain things going on on the same nights, like somebody would have a play, and then somebody else would have a play, and it's like, jeez, wouldn't it be nice to be able to know what the other guy's doing? So not everything is on one night and they're not competing. So that's part of that reason. But I don't, I get where the problem is. I'm just not sure how it's fixable without fully funding an arts organization actually do it. You're asking them to do something now. Do you know how much they're getting now? Is it still coming out of CDG, whatever funds?
They don't get any.
Because it was coming out of there.
They haven't got any in a couple of years. It's all coming out of the city council budget as a general request from other nonprofits.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
And they're getting very little from Auburn. Auburn's only giving them.
They're not getting any from Auburn. They're just getting school.
Well, they're getting per event.
Per event, that's right.
Per event.
That's right, because they got cut my funding, so.
Where are they housed, LA?
On Lisbon Street, they rent an office from, what's his name, Leighton Cooney.
On Wanacizby, or used to be?
No, no, they've been there a long time, probably twenty years.
And where the Plantalalooza was underneath.
Right, 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 in that, in the, the office, yeah, right next to it. So I'm not sure what the answer is, and I don't know if maybe the answer is them working with the chamber, because they were also trying to put out a calendar of events, but it was just arts events. Again, that doesn't work. You need to just have a calendar of events. So I, I just wanted to kind of clarify what's going on in that area, but there's really no true leadership in trying to make a cohesive who's doing what, when, so, and I don't know if it should be in there either.
Well, it gets to a point that each agency is very parochial. They want their own.
Bang.
There are other communities that have a very vibrant arts and culture and entertainment. And the one that comes to mind is St. John's, New Brunswick. And everybody, there, there's a community calendar, and things aren't, that you've got to make a decision, do I go here, here, or here? They all cooperate, and I don't know how that can happen here unless people want to relinquish some of their power and control over agencies and learn to cooperate and consolidate. There's too many, people are going into too many places, and there really needs to be one sort of thing to sort of channel it. But it's very hard to get a nonprofit or an organization, you cannot force them to cooperate. So what do you do?
St. John's and Brunswick's putting up a new building, by the way, activity center, huge activity center. It's probably going to be one of the biggest, larger buildings that they have, and I imagine some of that might.
I wonder if it's just a word change, because, I mean, we do some of this now with some of the events, I mean, that we do, whether it's services in kind, or, you know, the library being used, or the armory being used. Maybe it's just continue to coordinate and support, same with under the, the title itself, cooperate and support, maybe instead of coordinate. Because we are supportive of these things now, and, you know, versus us actually coordinating it. Sandy, I would tend to agree with Sandy that, you know, we have trouble keeping our own act together, and if we're going to take on arts and culture, they're having problems taking it on themselves.
But, but all they're asking for here is, is, you know, continue to support a third party. That's not a bad idea to support a third party.
No, I agree, and I'm, I'm suggesting maybe the board wants to use that same language for the first bullet as well, where it's support versus coordinate.
The problem is the third party doesn't exist.
Well, to support a third party, would, would the implication there is that?
That something should be created.
Right, and then, and as Sandy noted, that, that's coming from that group of people at the Plantalalooza. They, they all acknowledged, it'd be nice if somebody took, took control of the situation here, you know.
Well, part of the issue is LA Arts at the time was trying to take control of it, but they were still under the other leader. They were still doing their own concerts and events, so you can't say, I'm going to, you know, be the clearinghouse for everybody, but I'm also putting on a concert against your concert. So that's what the issue was.
Conflict of interest, it's a conflict of interest.
There was a conflict of interest, but that is not happening anymore. They're not doing events. Now it's just schools and Art Walk, one other thing, oh, the public art. So they, they figured out, you know, we can't do that. So maybe if they could grow larger again, get direction, they could be that clearinghouse. It's going to take a long time to repair the relationships of distrust from the many years of competition.
Or do we simply redirect the funds to, like, the chamber to be the coordinating entity? If there's parochialism out there and there's no oversight from one organization to another.
tweaking the direction of the Chamber in some really interesting ways that might even touch a little bit on, as a tourist bureau, not quite. But so that might actually work, especially, I see LEGC here is down in a marketing, Arts and Culture, which historically wouldn't have been the case, though things are really changing in those areas, so maybe the combination of them, because it is part of economic growth is to promote the arts, without a doubt. It'll change this community if you start putting energy into bringing artists here. So that's, that could be an interesting way of...
Do we want to change what's here? We're gonna just hope that, well, if we can't come up with a better way of stating it, then we just leave it and move on?
Yeah, because it kind of does put the Chamber and LEGC there, so maybe we do.
Just leave it? Okay. Embracing the, leveraging social media, bring the community together. I'm not sure that that necessarily, with our demographics, is necessarily an achievable situation. I think, well, even when we had the, the think tank and the Planet Palooza, we tried to develop a Facebook page, right, and it failed miserably.
Dottie's doing a nice job, though.
If Dottie gets, if Dottie gets the information, she's been making a better effort, I think, trying to get it out there on the city's Facebook page.
She's been really good.
In the last, in last month or so, I would say.
And I don't doubt that? Who reads it?
Everybody.
Different generation groups.
It's a different generation.
We read it.
It is, it is, it is a very different generation. And, and until that demographic changes, I'm not sure that that's necessarily gonna move that. I don't know. That's just, although I guess this is a twenty, thirty, forty-year plan, by then, I guess the rest of us will be drooling and I gruel somewhere, so it won't matter, so, it's just...
No, I, I think it's just another tool in the box. I mean, that's just another, a means of getting people together. You know, I, I, I'm not a Facebook user, but my wife is, and, you know, it's...
See, there's always somebody in the family that is.
It's the wave of the future.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to be in there, I think.
Do you all see the email that was sent out at four, three, at four o'clock this afternoon?
Yes.
Social media.
From Dottie.
That was an email, not Facebook. That wasn't social media, it was just a direct email.
Well, why are you correcting me? I'm pointing out the email.
She's just being sassy about social media.
Is that, is that your new role here on the planning board?
It is what it is.
Did you see the email? And that's a means of social media, it's a type of social media, you know, for people. Everybody has got data plans, got its email, you know? So the point I'm making is, I just wanted to know if you'd seen it.
Yes.
No.
I didn't.
What was the subject? What was the subject? I may have been wrong.
We're invited to ribbon cutting at Logistics, System Logistics, on Alfred Lloyd Parkway, marking the grand opening of its high-tech factory.
I was just thinking about how much time was being spent away from the office to cut a ribbon instead of looking for more, more economic development.
It'd take long to put this email together.
Must have been an hour, at least.
I've been to a few of the ribbon cuttings, quite a bit of time is consumed, quite a bit of man-hours between everybody standing there.
It's possible. On page ten, are there other things that we want to touch on? I, I saw that down near the bottom, it talks about seek outside alternative funding for the arts. And again, that goes back to who's gonna ask. I mean, if there is no organization and no dedicated grant writer, that's gonna be so fractured that... This is down three from the bottom, Sandy. Seek outside alternative funding for the arts on ten, on page ten.
Oh, well, they're actually always actively doing that. All organizations are always writing grants to the main arts commission, whether it's for schools or, yeah.
So would it be more effective if it was organized and was coordinated?
They'll never do it.
It'll never happen. Right, it'll never happen. It'll never happen. Yeah, that's the problem.
Like herding cats with rabies.
I would add that it may not be as accurate as we would like, but it is good public relations to have it in there.
I agree.
I would, might be.
I don't think it hurts to have it in there.
Yeah. I'm, I'm curious what the board thinks I should put in the, the other column here, because I, I think other groups should be involved, and, for example, the one above that says LA Arts, and I'm not sure that we want to say LA Arts, or do we want to just say something more generic, like, I don't know, local art, art, art and culture organizations or something to that effect?
I like that. I like that.
I have a question for Sandy. Do you think most of the organizations, nonprofits that are in Lewiston, Auburn, are members of the main nonprofit?
I would say yes.
So could they be a source for consolidation, utilizing some of their strengths?
I, I wouldn't see that happening.
There's, there's actual organizations, the main association of nonprofits.
Right. I, I run a nonprofit on Lisbon Street, and I'm wondering, what kind of, what kind of nonprofits do you generally see in this, in this collective?
Oh, you mean in the arts?
Well, I was, I was thinking it might be arts, but it, does it spill over into other social services or something?
The main nonpro, sure.
M A N P.
Absolutely.
Yeah. No, it's all over the place.
It's all over the place.
It's all over the place, but...
You know, I don't know a lot about them. I don't, I don't really know. It could be, but would they? Could they? But would they would be another thing.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know. It's, it's a good question. I don't know. It's a good question.
I don't know if they really could create a clearinghouse for some of that. I mean, they're, they are, they have been around quite a long time, and they seem a bit more organized than some other groups, although if that's a, that may be a very...
Do they meet, Sandy?
I don't know. I've been away from the arts boards for about three or four years now, so I, no, I wouldn't say they meet.
Probably just information online, as well.
Yeah, that's all I've ever seen.
Okay. Just a thought.
Yeah.
And the other two, Support Museum LA, obviously, that's one that needs to stay in there. I'm surprised that the city manager's charged with that one, but...
Yeah, that's interesting.
I would have thought that the council and the Chamber and all of the folks that are working toward that would have been more active, more so on the, on the, on the right-hand page, maybe than the city manager, but...
Certainly, if the board wants to make that as a recommendation, we can throw that in.
I think it should be part of economic and community development also.
For the museum you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
And the Chamber, and the, and probably the library as well. I mean, this, that's where some of that information is gonna come from, I would think.
A lot of these, to me, arts-related things have to be part of the economic development.
Yeah.
That's my feeling.
I think you're absolutely right on that.
Yeah.
And the last one is undoable. To cooperate with Auburn, it's not that we can't, they won't. And as we've talked before, the local communities, Savattis, Poland, Leeds, Green, Turner, you know, Lisbon, they're not willing to participate in the costs of, you know, helping us be the service community, and Auburn's probably the worst offender in my mind. It's gonna be tough to get that regional coordination when there just really isn't any support. I think the, I think the lawsuit against the county commissioners must be, must, must, must be an absolute aberration. I think we've never probably pulled eleven communities together to support any one thing ever, probably in the history of the county. It's just, it's, it is ridiculous.
They all seem to agree on this one.
They all seem to agree on this one, for some reason, but, and even Auburn and Lewiston agree on this one, but...
Because they're the receivers of the tax bill in that case.
Yeah.
These, you know, coordination unit that would, could be made to organize all of these events and all that, is that something that could be set up or devised through the college system as a project or something to set it up, and then could be passed on to other people to run it once it's up and running, or be involved in throughout the years, or...
I mean, I suppose there's, there's a possibility of something like the Harwood Center maybe taking something like that on, but that's, I don't even, but that, then it, again, creates the situation of what, what someone like Bates is doing is always gonna end up in first place, because there's, you know, and it's nature of the beast. If you have three things happening and you've got something that you've scheduled a year ago, yours is gonna be there. I mean, I don't know whether, and, and the Harwood Center is, is, it's a community outreach function of the college, but I'm not sure that we could, I don't know how we could, you know, even entice them to take that on, because I got a stinkin' suspicion that that's a bigger job than, well, we know, it's, it's, it's like, like Sandy said, herding cats, so...
Just a thought.
Yeah, it's a good thought, I mean, that's one thing, Dave, that, you know, that in a lot of this, Bates really isn't included in any of the cooperating parties in a lot, much of this, which I'm surprised they're not somehow included.
As a responsible party, you're...
Well, well, it's not necessarily as, and a responsible party, but as a cooperating party. I mean, they have a lot going on that adds to the cultural richness of the community, but yet they don't seem to be, we seem to be exclusive of them rather than inclusive of them.
Yeah, we, actually, that was brought up, and we're going to, somewhere in the 186-page area, one of the comments was that we should be referencing Bates and their contribution to the community. So, I mean, it may be just a couple of sentences, but the board brought that up when we were reviewing that section.
I mean, certainly, they've, should be recognized for what they do add to the community.
I, I kind of like Sandy's idea, the council is actually, the council, the Chamber's actually thinking about, like, almost a tourism bureau, and when you go to other communities and whatnot, they have that, you know, you know, summer events calendar-type thing that comes out of an organization, and it lists everything and everything, and it's not really a biased document, it's just a, hey, this is what's going on, you know, whether you, whether it's arts or...
See, it's not just arts. And that's what they're, at, at the last meeting, not the board meeting, but it was an LEGC marketing committee meeting, and Matt saw it, and that's one of the things he mentioned, it's all pending board approval, of course, but that's one of the things he brought up, is there needs to be a calendar of events that includes everything. Because when LA Arts was doing it, it was just all arts. But then a couple of other things would trickle, trickle in, like the balloon festival, so it's like, okay, is it or isn't it? What is it? So, so that's what he's gonna try and bring up, trying to get funding for it.
If you do it well, if you do it well, the organizations will go to the Growth Council or the Chamber, whoever's responsible, and say, I want to be on your calendar.
Absolutely.
Chamber would be, I think, a good direction for that. It's not necessarily a tourism bureau, but it'd be a departure, but somebody needs to do that. I, many, I mean, the magazines tried it, everybody's tried it. It's hard to do, because people don't give you their stuff in time, it's a nightmare to do. I mean, it takes a lot of time, however, somebody's gotta do it. Because I've had people come to town, and they're like, where do I find out what's going on? It's all over the place.
Well, we talked Chamber, is it Lewiston Chamber, Auburn Chamber?
Andrews Goggan Chamber of Commerce.
That's the only, only level.
It's the full county.
It's, it's a county.
There are no subdivisions.
Nope. It's a full county.
Well, YPlay is a, is a sub, I mean, YPlay is a, is sort of a...
Isn't it mainly the Lewiston, Auburn area?
Of the Chamber, but the Chamber itself, fourteen hundred some-odd members, is encompassing of most of the county, which is what really needs to happen.
Right.
And I don't even think it would be a bad idea if the Chamber did a county-wide kind of calendar event. I mean, there could be something going on in Turner or Poland, or, you know, just what's going on, you know?
So that's the talk, anyways.
What, what do other counties do? I mean, and take Cumberland, you know? What do they do?
Cumberland has the newspaper in their pocket, and they give something every week called Explore, which, again, somehow, if we could reach out to the newspaper to help us, although, there's, there's a listing of events in the newspaper, in the Sunday paper, which is surprisingly extensive.
You've got to put it in yourself.
How does it get in there? You have to put it in yourself.
You have to put it in yourself.
You pay for it, and it goes in that column?
We don't pay for it. It's free.
You sure?
But what happens is they all look exactly the same, and reading through and finding the one you're interested in is, is...
Because they're all, yeah.
Well, they're all this, you get a, you get a one-column inch blurb times a whole page of one-column inch blurbs. It looks like...
Twenty-two times.
Almost looks like the, the, the stuff that's published on the...
What's the title of, what's, what's the, under what heading?
What's happening. What's happening. Yeah. Whereas with the Portland paper, there's an insert that usually has a colored cover, and it's six or eight pages, and it's called Explore May, Explorer or Explore May. It's in the Sunday paper, and it's, it's pretty extensive, but they never list anything that happens in Lewiston, Auburn.
It, it seems like...
It's true.
That's a silver bullet for the economy, to have...
It is. It's just, it's not a cost.
Why is it so difficult?
It's costly.
It's costly.
It's costly, time, time. It, it takes a lot of time, because these...
To coordinate?
Yeah, to coordinate, because you're always calling this person and saying, do you have any, okay, here's the deadline, you better get it in. It's, that's the problem. I know, I was part of that effort for a while, and it's a nightmare, it's a nightmare.
For publishing, you mean? For publishing?
Yeah.
Well, you pick a date.
I think this is just gonna end up going online, there's no way it's gonna go out in print. I don't see it happening. I don't, I don't see anybody affording that. LA Arts used to do it years ago, when I was born here.
Well, if you can go online, it would, you're only one step away from going out to print. You know what I mean?
Yeah, but there's no cost involved in printing.
Well, there's the cost, yes, as far as publishing, yeah, but...
And then distribution.
It seems to me like that's the silver bullet, for really...
Oh, I think it's a big deal, which is, I think they're recognizing it, and it's great that the younger generation is recognizing it.
But it's competitive, isn't it?
What do you mean competitive?
When I say it's competitive, well, you know, well, what you just experienced about LA Arts, you know, having their, you know, the conflict of interest, you know?
Well, they'll maybe think it out. If they start seeing a clearinghouse, everything's out, they're gonna, like, when I was part of the first film festival, one year, the, the Ball at St. Mary's, no, at the CMNC, was held the same year. And the next year, we talked to each other and said, let's not do that. Let's make sure that we don't have these events on the same weekend.
Right.
So I think when you start seeing things online, all in one place, you'll start, you'll be able to check, and that's what we've done since then, you know? People will check with each other, so that would be very, that'd be important to do it, just in that.
Coordination, that's, that's difficult.
For really, really big events, you know, you don't want three great things happening on the balloon festival weekend, you know?
Bates College weekend, last weekend, and, and last year, and the Dempsey Challenge, they had to flip weekends.
And that's, yeah, exactly.
And it was, it was the second time.
Because the first year it was on, because I remember, it was first, and I said, guys, what have you done? And they said, we didn't know. Like, oh, you're not gonna get a hotel room anywhere.
But there's no, but there's no clearinghouse, really.
That's right. They didn't know. They didn't ask the right people.
If you submitted a date to a clearinghouse, and you saw that there was a double, double event, that was a big event, you'd...
Oh, you see it the year before, you could at least go back with history and go, oh, wow, that's a real, let's not do it in May, let's do it in April, because everything's in May.
Like, oh, you're not gonna get a hotel room anywhere.
But there's no, but there's no clearinghouse, really.
That's right, they didn't know, they didn't ask the right people.
If you submitted a date to a clearinghouse and you saw that there was a double, double event, that was a big event, you'd
Oh, you see it the year before, you could at least go back with history and go, oh, wow, that's a real, let's not do it in May, let's do it in April, because everything's in May. So, yeah, I think it's a big deal, so, anyway.
Mike?
Earlier Sandy said something about some counties go to LA Arts but not necessarily other groups.
No other groups that I know of, that was the big issue, LA Arts, because they were designated years ago, and there was a big argument about this on the Lewiston Auburn side, as the, how did they put it, the agency, the arts agency of Lewiston Auburn on both sides of the river. And they would get funding from both sides of the river and then they would, they'd do music in the parks for free and different things like that.
So if Lewiston's limited funding was set up such as City of Lewiston, the council administrator, was to say that all the organizations need to create an association of their components and that association would get the funding that Lewiston's gonna allocate to create the clearinghouse.
Whoever that funding is, yeah. I mean, that's my belief, I don't think that would make anybody like LA Arts unhappy, they wouldn't be happy to lose their funds. I, I've always thought it's got to be somebody that is, is going to direct the arts, you know, in the city. But like I said, LA Arts is turning into that, that is what they're becoming because they don't put on performances anymore. They were putting on performances for funding because they don't get much from the city. I mean, it doesn't, I mean, it used to be, used to be a lot.
I think, I think it's, it's under twenty thousand now, it's, it's, it's not very much money.
Yeah, one time I think it was like twenty from both, each city.
It was twenty from both, but, I mean, but the budget is.
That seemed to make perfect sense.
I mean, that didn't even pay for one staff member, you know, so, but now they're down to just two and a half, I think.
But I mean, but then putting on events, that seemed to make perfect sense.
They had to.
Right?
They had to, to stay alive, so I get it, so, um, so, and, and grants, getting grants, so.
But we'll see this
I mean, it's hard because some states like Florida, they, you know, they make sure their arts agencies are funded. And then the arts agencies go out and kinda spread the money too and make events happen and different things. They can't, they, they are trying to do arts events for everybody and trying to stay alive, same time. It's difficult, so.
Okay. So, it's kinda where we're at with that, I think, so, try to keep moving so we do get through this tonight. I would really like to get through this so we can move this forward and Dave probably feels the same way. Twelve is about transportation choice and mobility. Not, starts right off with the return to a two-way street network. I mean, we've talked about this over and over and I'm not sure that I'm necessarily in support of having that be part of the comp plan. I mean, I, it's, having, having done the downtown circulation study that's right at the same time that they were doing the plan, that said just the opposite, that just seems to strike.
Well, it did for some roads, I mean.
Yeah.
Lisbon Street didn't reference that, but Bates Street had talked about making that two-way, so, I mean, there are certain roads where it may make sense, other roads probably not.
Probably not. So, I'm not sure that, you know, promoting a return to two-way street networks necessarily needs to be the headline there.
Yeah, consider, some areas are review.
Yeah. I, I, I think, well, I'm not sure that we necessarily need to even, although it's brought up earlier about turning Lisbon Street into a two-way street, at least lower Lisbon Street, and that just, I, having seen it all these years like it is and with the amount of improvements that have been made to the wide sidewalks and the streetscape that's there, I just can't imagine that that, and between the, the geometry of the intersection at Hallit Square of Lisbon Street and Canal Street and Main Street up in front of Pex, right by where Dostie's is, if you think about the geometry of that intersection, I, I just can't imagine how you would ever make it work without it being a total disaster.
Well, it costs a fortune, I mean.
Well, I'm not even sure physically that there's room enough to do anything there. I mean, I suppose you could put a rond de let there and really screw it up, but other than that, because of the geometry of it, nothing comes in square. I actually don't see how in the world you could possibly make that work. So, I'm not really, I mean.
The board, I mean, talked about this at length before and, and maybe what we could do is, again, someone's mentioned consider, so, consider a two-way network and then maybe if the board wanted to, it's where it says making downtown street conversions a priority and maybe that language isn't necessary there. Because, I mean, whatever we do, we're gonna have to study and we're gonna find out whether or not it makes sense. And some streets may make a lot of sense and other ones might be like, yep, just spend ten grand and confirmed it's a horrible idea.
So I think, I think the fix there would be just use the word consideration, consider, rather than return to.
And, and in the timeframe, make it long-term, fifty years. Good idea, Norm, good idea.
How old are you guys, you know, you're, so, is that what I'm hearing the board say? Can, consider?
Yeah, I think that would work.
So just so you folks know, when I'm, when I'm making that change in the matrix, I'm going back to the text as well because it corresponds to that.
As far as like
Civilize the bridges, you mean?
Make them more pedestrian and bike friendly. I mean, like, if you look at the, if, if you look at the South Bridge, the, the Bernard Long Peace Bridge.
Oh, yeah.
That one is not really too bad because there's definite separation from the travel lanes to the sidewalk. It's not great, but there's certainly the steel I-beams in between where you're walking and where the travel is, the traffic is. The Middle Bridge, the Middle Bridge, the sidewalks are, are fairly wide, but there, you trip off the edge of the curb and you're laying in traffic. There's no real separation there to create any type of a separation. And that doesn't mean that something couldn't be done to, would accomplish that, but that's part of what that is. The bridge over toward the mall, I don't know what in the world you could do with that. Traffic is moving at sixty miles an hour, there's a very, very narrow breakdown lane, particularly over the water. How you would civilize that to make that seem safer for pedestrians or bicyclists is, I don't really have any idea how you would accomplish that because of the width of the lanes and the narrowness of the breakdown lane.
You, you can't cross, I mean.
Oh, my God.
I challenge every member of this planning board tomorrow at noon time to go for a walk, go through Railroad Park, go down to the bridge and try to cross to the other side.
Yeah.
Close your eyes and run across, because that's about the
On the, on the South Bridge?
On the Longley Bridge.
On the Longley Bridge.
On the Longley Bridge?
Oh, on the Longley Bridge, oh, yeah.
You cannot, there's no safe way. I, I, it's incredible watching people almost like die, almost like die.
The only thing they could do is hang sidewalks on the outside of the
It's almost impossible, and, and the Auburn side's not much better because they have turning traffic.
I've seen it done at night, people that, I see people on that bridge at night all the time.
Yeah, but what she's saying is trying to cross.
Trying to cross. If you wanna cross from the Vons to go over into Veterans Park, close your eyes and run across the street. That's about the chance you have to cross. There's no ability to cross because traffic keeps turning. There's no ability to cross that street.
What, I just noticed this, actually down in Portland by the, the ferry terminal there that goes over the peaks and everything, that light there actually stops all the traffic for maybe five or ten seconds to let pedestrians cross. And it was, and it was, like, I, I noticed it right away only because of what I do and everything and I'm like, oh, this works. Because otherwise, it's probably similar to in a Vons situation, you stop traffic one way, you got a ton of traffic still going the other way. And it's, unless you're Broadway in New York City and you have a, you outnumber the cars, it's hard to
That's true. The Auburn side is just as bad, so it's not just the Lewiston, is trying to cross from one side of Main Street or Port Street to get to the other side is almost impossible. They have walk lights, the problem is, it'll say walk, but you still got traffic coming. And, and people don't, they
Don't, okay.
They don't get it.
Which is, which is surprising because, I mean, part of it has, to me, it has to do with the signaling, signalization of it. We're doing a big project up in Farmington right at the moment. At the university up there, there are several places where you can cross Main Street. If you push the button, you get a series of yellow flashing lights that you cannot miss.
Yep.
And they've done a good job of enforcing it and they, that thing is so, is right enough that anybody, that, I mean, part of the problem is, like down by the Vons, it's, you get the walk light, but there's nothing to stop the traffic.
Right.
Those flashing yellow lights that are there that signalize that this is a pedestrian crosswalk, don't exist in the city Lewiston. And they probably ultimately will have to exist down by the, by the Grand Trunk Railroad Station if we're ever going to be able to manage parking and crossing from the mill section down into the riverfront.
We've talked about installing similar lights at Kaplan University and CMMC.
Right.
All the crossing, like CMC has theirs hanging from telephone poles now. And that's not the practice that
The problem with Kaplan though, because I come in that way, is because of the parking. You have people parking.
You can't see them.
You can't see them, they walk out between
They happen to me tonight.
They have, they have a crosswalk, a nice crosswalk.
You can't see them.
You can't see them until they're out in the middle of the road.
And they're scared to go out further, you know?
The, the other thing that they need to consider is, I have a friend who's a lieutenant with the Brunswick Police Department, and she says the learning curve for Bowdoin College freshmen and sophomores and their parents with cars is Brunswick absolutely, positively enforces. You better stop if someone's in the crosswalk. And they
And they enforce it.
It is, it's amazing when you go down there, that when, it's highly trained. People who are, live in the Brunswick or socialize, they know enough to stop. But they give, they don't give warnings, they give summonses. And, and she says, that is the way, is, is harsh enforcement to stop people. But I, I cringe. If I wanna get to the other side of, to Veterans Park, I go all across the bridge, I get out by Griddy's, go underneath, come up and go up that side to get to Veterans Park. Because I don't dare to cross the street.
Yeah.
You can't.
If we got the Riverwalk, if we got the Riverwalk extension that came from, back by the Red House, underneath the bridge up into Veterans Park, you could do it easily by going under. That's one of the things that we've talked about.
How can we address, what's, what's the most efficient way of addressing this issue?
From the Red House up behind Hampton
Yep.
and then under and come up in, in Veterans Park.
They have a lighted crosswalk?
By utilizing the bridge that's there, much like they did in Auburn. Right by Griddy's, it goes under and you can go all the way up to the western
It's turning lanes and wipes up right out.
It's nice under there.
Very nice.
If we improve the pedestrian, I mean, I, I don't, I'm sure it screws up timing because all those lights all the way from Sabata Street to Denny's are all synchronized, so if we would make
Till the train goes by, yeah.
Even then, they're, 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 they're thinking, or they're supposed to be thinking.
They're supposed to be thinking.
But, I mean, could you do something where you just have all the lights red for a certain amount of time or something like that?
Only he's right about Brunswick breakfast, it's really handled about it.
And then the, the riverfront master plan speaks to what you just referenced, Bruce. Long-term plan is to do a similar situation to Auburn and get underneath there. And I think that would gain traction when Island Point develops because there's gonna be that much more activity over there to get
Either under or over.
Exactly.
Well, the under probably is the least, is probably the most cost-effective currently.
Right, you know, because we talked, we've been saying upstairs, if something big happened at Island Point, they're gonna need parking. And I've done it, you know, at, at this time of night, leaving Pedros to walk over to the parking garage, even at this time of night, it's, it's hairy because it's poor late and the road is five lanes wide there. I mean, it's just, it's, so, something's gonna happen there, but we
I mean, somebody has to get her
That's usually the way things go.
Yeah.
And part of that has to do with the fact that we've increased, we've increased the speed through there by doing away with any on-street parking. There always used to be on-street parking there. I remember well parking in front of the Holly, I remember, I remember well.
Couldn't be the Empire Theater, it had to be the Holly.
Yeah, did you notice which one you parked in?
Well, there, there never was parking in front of the Empire. It was always on the other side.
On the other side.
It was always on the other side. And by making that statement, I knew everybody would know exactly where I was talking. But, I mean, that hasn't, that certainly hasn't, it's, what's happened is increased the speed there drastically. And now it's five lanes and there's nothing to slow it up. And I, I think that that's, it's part of the problem there. There used to be businesses on that corner. There used to be, you know, there was the House of Pizza was there, the, the music joint was there, the radiator shop. There was enough business there to sort of, you know, I mean
Find the space.
You know, there was, I mean, there was enough business there that created an opportunity for people to be parking and that has a tendency to slow that traffic. That's all been eliminated, so we've accentuated the problem pretty drastically, I think. With that type of thing, there's no traffic calming measure there that would even begin to slow it. They're doing thirty-five, forty miles an hour through there regularly, which really makes it a pedestrian nightmare.
It's a tough location, it's a tough spot, very tough.
Now, if we could redevelop that whole strip and put some businesses in there and actually go back to on-street parking, you know?
That's not gonna happen.
Well, you could. Short term, no, but long term, possible.
Well, okay. You know, and civil, that's, that's part of what civilizing the bridges was about and I think that that is a worthy goal. The bike and pedestrian connections, we've already seen some of this, there's a contingent of folks that aren't all that crazy about doing that and there's a contingent of folks that are passionate about it. So I think it probably needs to stay in there and work on it. Certainly not a perfect, Pine Street, I guess, is the perfect example of, it's not perfect, but it can be done. As far as the connectivity, like, you know, avoid dead ends and cul-de-sacs, I'm not as convinced that that's a big problem here because of the lack of the residential cul-de-sacs that we have within the downtown. Maybe more of a problem for other areas, but I'm trying to think of where I think that that's a problem.
I, I don't know that that's a downtown issue. I think that really goes just towards, when you folks are looking at subdivision plans and there's a bunch of vacant land abutting that, can you develop that in a means that there could be future connectivity to get from one subdivision to another out there versus it just dead ends and you can't get from here to there? The Mark Street subdivision that you folks approved, that's a good example of where they actually kept some connectivity at the end of it because they were gonna continue Mark Street all the way around the pond and come back to Grove Street. Whereas we have plenty of other subdivisions where it's, you know, you see them on an aerial photo and it's just, you know, there are all these little legs
Just walked in there and that's it, yeah.
So at least if we, and we do this now upstairs, we encourage them when there's a subdivision, consider leaving some land there because, well, I'm not gonna develop that. Well, you might not, but, but maybe it makes sense for the development to continue at some point in the future. We're not saying you have to, but it keeps the option available for somebody down the road.
Isn't that what Bates College wanted to do when they were building their dorms? They wanted to close that end of Franklin straight off?
That's right, that's right. And we weren't so sure that that was a good idea, you know? I mean, from a connectivity perspective, we were worried about the neighborhood there saying, how many people, you know, if that was a full bait street there, staff was more amenable to considering it, you know, if it was one of these, they own, I mean, if it wasn't for the amount of traffic, campus would be a better example of close it off because they own everything on either side of it, they could have control of it. That's a major arterial though, I mean, so in that respect, it's not a good idea. But one of those side streets in there, I could see in the future that coming up if they owned everything and they wanted to make it a pedestrian way, that, that might make sense.
And, you know, where, where it talks about in re-envisioning the gateway approaches, obviously, you know, that's going to, that, that's a long-term, that, that's really a long-term goal, that's gotta be really out there. You know, because that gateway, you'd have to consider that the gateway starting at exit eighty and to redevelop that whole stretch by the time you get all the way down to the Western Gateway is a pretty, it's a pretty broad swath of the highway business district that would have to be, you know, to re-envision that. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I think it's a great idea, it's just that it's, that's a, it's gonna be a huge task to ever pull that off. That'll take years. I don't know exactly how far that is due, Dave, from exit eighty down to the Western Gateway, that must be at least two miles.
Yeah, it's probably two miles. But that might be an example where, you know, those, those examples of what you can do, like the Sabata's and Russell Street intersection, you know, when something happens there, that could be a, you know, a, a piece of starting that whole gateway improvement there. That makes me think Elizabeth Anzes for sale, she's marketing it on her own, if you know anybody who wants it. So, make it happen.
What about Mr. Garson, no?
What's that?
I see Mr. Garson has a sign on it now.
That's, I guess, an improvement.
It's a start, I guess.
The trees are growing back in the gutters.
Yeah, yeah, it's, we're almost thinking Yeah, yeah. It's, we're almost thinking about letting it happen so we have a reason to condemn it, you know? It's going to get to that point.
Oh, absolutely. That's another intersection. That's a horrible, horribly designed intersection. If you're not familiar with the area, it's not well-marked. And Lord help, if you want to go from Elizabeth Ann's over to Rite Aid, good luck crossing Sabata Street. It's almost virtually impossible.
When you say Elizabeth Ann is for sale, that includes the, the other two buildings?
Not sure if includes the Chinese restaurant, but includes the oil, oil bill.
Change thing, yeah.
Because I believe, no, the Chinese restaurant leases from Elizabeth Ann.
You could be right. I'm not sure about that.
And that's an interesting, I, I drove up there the other day and I don't know why I was looking at it. But from about where Robert's Card Center was, the campus, right, all the way up through till you get up, almost, almost up to Haniford's. There is such an incredible amount of underutilized wasted pavement on both sides of the street there. Uh, it's, it's unbelievable. If you drive through there with that, look at how much pavement there is with grass growing up through it. It's ridiculous. You know, it's a huge heat zone and it's just a total waste of that whole strip. Well, just, it's just, a lot of buildings have been torn down and it's just, just, just un, unutilized, just parking that nobody uses. And it's ridiculous. I mean, there's so much potential for development right in that little area there. And it's just, man, as you drive up through there, you look on both sides of the street, it's just everywhere. Um, it's, it's really.
But most of what's been torn down, Bruce, believe it or not, during the day, during office hours, St. Mary's uses it for parking for employees and for office buildings. And whatnot, they're, they're parking there. It's too bad they couldn't, I, I know you hate this word, uh, too bad that St. Mary's didn't build a garage.
Instead of spreading it everywhere.
Instead of spreading their parking, you know, for three miles around the hospital.
There's nothing to stop that, right? And if they buy, it can turn anything into a parking lot.
Yeah, as long as it, as long as it's in a zone that, that allows for that. They own a lot of property on Lafayette Street and zoning is keeping them from doing that type of thing over there. So if they want to expand their campus at some point, they may need a rezoning over there. Because it immediately abuts their property. But they've had the conversations in the past about doing a shared parking garage with Bates College and neither one of them, they both like the idea, but neither one of them really wants to do it either at the same time.
I think Roma has it that they would love it if the city would, um, build a garage.
I'm sure they would. I'm sure they would.
They would be willing to, you know, pay some rent towards it.
Oh, they've got a new CEO right now at St. Mary's.
That's right, yeah.
And, and, and you know, if you look at the, 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 uh, Lower Lisbon Street parking garage next to where Kaplan is or where Northeast Bank or those guys are. Chamber. If that money had been spent over by St. Mary's and Bates and put that garage there, it might actually have accomplished something. Because now that parking garage is basically empty.
We were doing so well.
You're doing so well.
We were doing so well. Who brought up parking garages?
Somebody did, yeah.
He was complaining about vacant pavement.
Thank you for starting the discussion.
Well, you, you didn't have to bring up the parking on, on Sabata Street, the empty lots.
Well, I mean, it was, it was, I was really surprised at how much there was, though. And I started looking at it and it's like, sheesh. All the way out. It's, it's, it's crazy how much, you know, dead parking there is out there.
If that Garson property was developed, um, in that sketch that you have upstairs.
Yeah, you could start to turn that around.
You could start to turn, turn that around.
Yeah.
You could. It's a reassort.
And you know, the way we've been kind of selling it lately as well is like, hey, the draft con plan talks about this. But we'd also been saying to people like, are you aware how close it is to Bates College? Like, St. Mary's is within walking distance. But Bates College, as much as we'd like the students to walk downtown, it's much shorter to walk to the intersection of East and Russell, uh, East and Sabata Street. So, you know, I thought we need another Starbucks in the community, but I can't help but think a Starbucks there would do gangbusters.
Trader Joe's would do famous.
Rennie's.
Rennie's would make money here. I keep writing to them, by the way. I keep writing to them, telling them to come.
It's within walking distance of, you know, eighteen hundred kids. You got one of the biggest employers.
Dollar Generals, the Dollar Generals and all these family dollars.
How about a mini Walmart?
Take, oh, I'd love a Rennie's.
We all think, I mean, I, I think everyone agrees that these things would do well. Apparently somebody knows better than us, so, you know.
Evidently, yeah. I know I've heard this, this discussion before about the encouraged end-of-trip facilities. That one seems to me to be more tied to longer-distance, uh, public transportation or to public transportation period. I'm not sure how that's going to be effective here. The community, the, the built-up community here is pretty small. And, uh, you know, typically that talk about end-of-trip facilities as, as being something that ends, you know, is if you had an L.L. Beans at the train stop, it'd be one thing. That's, that's kind of how I see that. Even the Brunswick, even the Brunswick Common Station downtown in Brunswick where the train ends, doesn't seem to me to really seem like it's enough to make you want to go to Brunswick.
It's a great idea if you have a lot of congestion in your community or maybe you want to alleviate parking demands or things like that. I mean, there are communities like Wilton used to phase, uh, I mean, when all the shoe shops are working up there, each shoe shop would let people out, their time clock's sort of several minutes apart just to beat the rush to all the stores and everything up there. And so you could do something like that in, in, in that situation where it's like, well, how do we alleviate some of that traffic? Maybe we can come up with incentives that have some of these things that encourage people to walk or bike to work or have services available. It, it's a nice idea, but I, I think it's interesting that's in short-term.
Yeah, it's.
I guess it could be a short-term policy. I think it's a long-term implementation.
I would agree. And then it's interesting when they talk about unbundling parking. I mean, this goes right back to that whole parking discussion that we continue to have. Is there too much parking? Is there not enough parking? Does on-street parking make more sense than off-street parking? And it's it has to be part of the, obviously it has to be part of the discussion, but I'm not sure providing incentives for the developers to unbundle parking is, I'm not sure that, um, the incentives is an appropriate way to get there. I don't know, I just. We're basically forcing them to provide parking now, which is a cost. If we just reduce that requirement, that could in and of itself be considered an incentive, I guess.
Well, I mean, specifically when they're talking about unbundling parking, they're talking about charging the resident for that parking space because there's a cost associated with constructing the parking space. So I got to buy the additional fifty by a hundred-foot lot for parking. If you want it, you're going to pay for it type thing. So you're translating the cost of your overall development and the idea is to make someone actually have to pay for that space. Maybe that works in some applications. I don't, I, you know. It, it's certainly not a universal fix by any means. Um, I, I, again, I think it's another tool that, you know, maybe it's not a bad thing for they can sit, sit to have it as an, as an option. Um, but I don't know that it would, you know, isn't it incentive?
Well, as long as you provide on-street parking in sufficient quantity, there's no way the developer's going to be able to charge for it.
Yeah, I, I mean, it, it's only going to work under certain circumstances, absolutely. And they'll know because if people aren't willing to pay for it, you know.
Under the previous heading, uh, relaxed parking requirements. I'm looking at the word eliminating. Having a little bit of heartburn. Back on page one ninety-nine, it looks like we had changed some of the language. I'm not sure if it's all of the language.
Yep, we did. And that, you're, you're right, Mike. And that's one of the things that I'll be hopefully hitting on. Um, the tool there, the wrench, whatever we call that. Um, update zoning regulations to consider relaxing the off-street parking. The board agreed to get rid of the word eliminate.
Uh, further up on the previous column that said parking, uh, fifth sentence, uh, fourth sentence down, the word eliminating I had crossed out. But if you go down a couple more lines, it says by eliminating parking. Not sure if that eliminating was ever eliminated.
Uh, yeah, I had that there too. By relaxing parking standards there. And then as well, I'm following the column above, above to the second column.
And I assumed that progressive cities were struck.
I'm sure.
Um, I had bold and underlined, but I might be wrong.
We, we did a word search so that we'd take out progressive.
Yeah, progressive every time.
Baton Puig.
Yes, yes, that one too, yes.
Bruce, I just have one definition. It's on the showcase canals. Neither Sandy or I know what wunnerfs are. What is that?
We don't know. We're giggling about it.
It's a shared street.
Sounds like a nickname of something.
It's sort of like Pine Street, but with a different spin on it. I think it, we determined it came from England, I think.
Netherlands, Netherlands.
Netherlands, yeah.
From Brussels.
Yeah.
You know, Amsterdam, you know, so you want to be able to walk through the red light district in Amsterdam.
So you were asked and we had that discussion.
We missed that.
We posted it on the social media.
That was good. That was good. One, one.
So, so are we going to do a word search for the wunnerfs and change it to something else?
I, I don't know if we need to. It actually, it talks about, um, what a wunnerf is in the text itself. I mean, if we want to just say in this section.
Is that like one ninety-nine?
Well, I mean, it says shared streets are wunnerfs. I mean, that's, that's what it is. The shared street takes into consideration vehicles, bikes, pedestrians. Basically the, the complete street policy that's.
So it's redundant, but in a what Swedish way or Norwegian?
Uh, I think a Danish way.
In a Danish way.
Mixed use, it's. There's another, I, I Googled it when we were here, you talked about it.
And actually, under the one about providing the bike parking storage, I think it's actually, it was a grant or something. There's some of that being provided now, right, through a third party?
Uh, there's a lot, there's always funds out there about, um, trying to improve, uh, bike storage and whatnot like that. Some municipalities, actually Portland requires it as part of the development review process that you have to have bike storage.
You can get one point, uh, on lead application by providing it.
And actually, I think, um, some woman from Portland Press is doing a story about it, about what other towns require for bike amenities.
Okay. Anything else on this page? Continue. Um, it talks about, uh, CityLink. Appropriate funds in LRTC to fund improvements to CityLink. And that's a function that we're pretty much doing anyway, I believe, isn't it, Dave?
Yes.
I mean, we're, CityLink is, is, gets a significant amount of dollars every year from both cities to continue operating, as far as I know. Has, has there been any traction at all with Concord about trying to, I know we've talked about it off and on, but.
The last I heard, they were doing a preliminary application to put one out at the Park and Ride in Auburn.
The Park and Ride in Auburn?
Yeah.
At the Turnpike?
Yeah.
Exit seventy-five?
And that's so convenient for the people downtown to get there.
It's very handy.
That's not their model. I mean, their model is for you and I to drive there and then hop on the bus type thing. So I can guarantee you, if that happens, the bus, the, the purple bus, the CityLink is going to make that a regular stop.
You know, it's so nice for the kids coming back from Bates College, you know, it's so convenient to, you know, from, from the Turnpike exit in Auburn to go to Bates.
There was, when I was coming back from Orinow, there was no problem getting off at the Greyhound right over here on Main Street. And then, you know, Bram or my.
When I was, when I was in college, when I was in college, you know, we used to pick it up at Seavey's. It stopped at Seavey's and dropped us right off on Stewart Street downtown. And then you could always grab the tea and go wherever you needed to go in Boston. Did it many, many, many times.
I mean, it would be a good thing if, if, if it just, if Concorde Trailways came, it would just be, it would be a positive thing. It's another option at least for people in the community.
Does CityLink even go out that far on Washington Street?
No.
I don't, I don't believe so.
No, they don't. They don't. No, not currently. No, not currently. There's nothing out there.
But they, they would change that just like they didn't go out to, uh, Challenger Drive and now they do with the VA clinic out there.
Right, right.
If there's a end user there, they'll go.
The question then becomes, can you coordinate schedules? How does that play into where Auburn wants to put the bus station downtown in front of the Espinac?
That's a great question for Auburn.
Yeah, again, they don't, they, they, that's where they want to put it. They want to put it in front of the Espinac. Since there's no parking garage, because they're, they're intelligent enough not to build empty parking garages. They, now they just want to build a little bus station.
There's a nice piece in the Twins eight times last week.
Uh, I didn't see, I didn't, I didn't see it, but it's possible. That was all part of the original parking garage plan. It was just like we did with Oak Street. That there was supposed to be a parking garage and a small enclosed area for the bus station right there, which made perfect sense.
Yeah, and the model of these bus companies now is not even to have a station. That's just not how they operate.
No, you just whip out your phone and show the, the driver that you bought your ticket on your phone with your social media account.
Or you do, do it online as well. I mean, that's what, you know, Concorde does that now. When you go on their website, they'll make special trips, um, in the mid-coast area. And they'll have, you know, like they stop at like the gas station, like a CN Brown or something. And it's, you can get the tickets from the cashier in there and stuff.
Well, they were negotiating with JNS Oil.
That's right.
And that, that's the thing like with the Down Easter. There's no tickets on the Down Easter. It's all done, basically it's all done electronically. Rail is here. Obviously, that's an ongoing discussion. The guy from Montreal still would like to have some way to get to Boston.
And we want to get to Montreal.
Yeah, and we'd like to get to Montreal. I think what's, what's unfortunate to me is that over a year ago, there was a conversation with, I'm trying to think of her name, Dave, the woman that runs the NEPR, Patricia Ryan?
Uh, it is Patricia though.
Anyway.
Runs what, the Down Easter?
That, she's the woman that runs the, the Northeast Passenger Rail Administration, or she's the executive director. She spoke at MDF.
Yeah.
And, and the question was raised.
Patricia Quinn.
Patricia Quinn, thank you, David. The question was raised, would there ever be a public, um, meeting, to gather input from the people of Lewiston, Auburn as to what we wanted? And we never really got an answer and it's never happened. So obviously NEPR really doesn't care. So you can't even get them to come and listen.
Indirectly, we did get an answer.
Yeah, they don't care.
Well, no, it's, it's all about dollars. It's all about raising a lot of, a lot of money. She, she hammered on that point that for there to be any additional growth and expansion in rail service that they would have, the economics test would have to, would have to justify.
But they've always said that about rail everywhere.
But she was heavy on it.
Somehow it happens everywhere else.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying it can, and I'm, and I'm on her side with that. Uh, but she made a, I found her presentation very well-informed and it was, um, she's a smart lady.
Well, yeah, but what she did say.
And she had a lot of information with that punch.
Right, but what she did say is the destination. She said, well, the destination is Boston, the destination is Boston, the destination is Boston.
Yeah.
And she didn't say that the destination was Portland. She said the destination is Boston like four times.
Right.
And that's what kind of triggered for me the, the alternating proposal that is being promoted by the folks that they want to run the line to the East End and then create the North Station, South Station debacle all over again because the destination is. and then create the North Station, South Station debacle all over again, because the destination is not the East End. The destination is a way to get from wherever we are to Boston. And so, you know, ending up going through, uh, Garmouth and Falmouth and ending up down by Burnham and Morle, having crossed across the ocean there, come across the end of the bay. It was like twelve million dollars to rehab that little section. It's two-thirds of a mile of marine construction and the Turn Bridge was twelve million dollars to end up nowhere. I mean, the only thing that would be there is in the unlikely event that there was a, one of the tourist ships had happened to come in. It'd be, that's where it's gonna drop you. How do you get from there to the transportation center so you can carry on to Boston and New York? You can't. It was, it was ridiculous. And that's, and that's one of the things that's been thrown out there repeatedly. Tony Donovan has thrown that out, I don't know how many times.
He's lost his credibility.
I believe so. I hope so.
He's in the minus.
Oh, yeah. Well, when we met at Callahan.
I shouldn't be saying this publicly, but he got caught in the crossfire there with the governor's article coming out.
Yes, well, at the, the, at the last meeting of the Planetpalooza, he stood up and said, I could bring Passenger Rail here tomorrow. Somebody should have said then, do it. I mean, he, he. He said that, right? And it was like, you know, you think anybody really believes you, Tony? I mean, if that could happen, you'd have done it. You can't.
Well, there wasn't anybody willing to corroborate what he brought to the media, you know, that.
Well, that was unfortunate, so. Anything else on page fourteen the folks want to talk about? Sixteen. Which are all things green and healthy, the mold, the fungi, and the fungi among us, so. We were fortunate that we are, I mean, we have, as, as Paul knows, this is a tremendous amount of community forest. There's a tremendous amount of green space available to us here. Most communities would, you know, kill for what we have available to us, almost within walking distance. And I think that, you know, the, the green economy is, is, it definitely has a, it definitely is something that is being promoted here. The Dempsey Challenge and a lot of other stuff that's here is.
So I'll note under policy, the Create TDR program, that was something that the board agreed to eliminate. So that, that one will be removed.
Okay, and that's on.
Under policy.
Under policy, okay. Yeah. Right, that's right, because we didn't feel that that was appropriate. And the shoreline zoning, Dave, are we out of compliance with the state currently?
No, we're in compliance, but they've not, they've adopted new guidelines that are encouraging communities to adopt at this point. They haven't mandated it yet. The last set of guidelines, all communities had to adopt by a date certain. They haven't established a date yet at this point.
Okay.
Those were just past, this past spring.
Just a, just a clarification on that too, when we talk about shoreline zoning standards. We have a small zone along the Andrews Goggin, right? And then we have one around No Name Pond. But do the brooks, any of the, the brooks come into play there?
Yep, No Name Brook from No Name Pond all the way into Sabates, that's all shoreline zoned. Sections of Salmon Brook, Jepson Brook.
Stetson.
Stetson Brook, they all have shoreline zoning around them as well.
Which comes back, and Garson Bog, of course.
Correct.
But comes back twenty, well.
Shoreline zoning overall is two hundred and fifty feet, and within that two hundred and fifty feet, there are certain restrictions as to what you can and can't do. As far as building, clearing, things like that.
Fellings and things like that.
Two hundred and fifty feet?
Yeah. The two hundred feet, fifty feet is really about like the size of cleared openings and things like that. But for the most part, in our, in our commercial districts where there's shoreline zoning, those are considered general development districts, and the setback is twenty-five feet. So there's a lot more flexibility in our commercial zones and whatnot. So it's really goes around No Name Pond and undeveloped racks of land, that's really where the provisions really come into, into hand. And it's, because of that twenty-five foot setback, it's rarely an issue in our commercial zoning districts. It's, No Name Pond is our biggest challenge, I guess, as far as shoreline zoning goes.
And there's not much pressure for additional development out there at this point?
No, it's really just redevelopment and clearing of trees around people's camps and things like that.
So that, that doesn't have as big an impact on us because of the, we just don't have as much of it as many communities, smaller communities.
Oh, yeah, I mean, and I'm thankful for that, because I have to administer that. And I can't imagine living in a community like, you know, has a Sebago Lake or something like that, because they're not easy rules to enforce. And there's a lot of, subject to interpretation and.
You're not gunning for the job in Belgrade?
No, that's, that would be a nightmare. And it's even worse, because in those communities, you have like three towns abutting the same lake, and you got neighbors on one side of the lake questioning how they're doing it on the other side of the lake.
Yeah, yeah, okay. You know, like improving access to fresh foods and stuff like that, I mean, that, that's a great goal. I'm not really sure how we, not really sure how we incentivize that. Obviously, supporting the, uh, the, uh, food thing up here at St. Joe's is, and the farmer's market. The farmer's market and the nutrition, um, Nutrition Center, obviously, both of those are existing. Then, of course, if you could just bring in a Trader Joe's and a Whole Foods, you know, then we could, it probably would help. But I think maybe we have to talk to Lincoln and Misty about that, right, to get them to come in here?
Yeah, and it's not, as though Lincoln hasn't tried on the Trader Joe's, sorry. I think everybody has tried.
Yeah, yeah.
Citizens and staff.
And Whole Foods is developing a whole new market concept for the millennials. Sort of a lower-priced Whole Foods option.
That, the, the lower price thing would make sense. They're interesting stores, they're great to visit. You just don't, don't pick anything up and buy it, because half the time, you don't know what it is. You know, Taro Root and, and Edamia and stuff like that, I just.
It's good for you.
It's good for, oh, I know it's good for me. Oh, I know it is. It's very good for me. I just don't.
I love Trader Joe's and Whole Foods.
Oh, I love Trader Joe's and Whole Foods. That's an interesting, Whole Foods to me is an interesting place to visit. And you can get out of Trader Joe's and actually afford to buy something.
Yeah.
It's true. Well, the way to bring the price down is probably encourage competition in the Whole Foods market, you know?
Well, they're actually, yeah, they, they, as Pauline was saying, they're actually have, developing a new market strategy of a, of a, like a, Whole Foods on the Walmart scale, is that they lower the price.
For millennials, yeah.
Yeah.
We learned in talking with someone who was interested in trying to do some type of food store in Mill Five, that the Whole Foods in Portland is one of the top grossing in New England.
It's packed in there all the time. It blows my mind.
It's amazing.
Go to market.
I go there all the time. It's amazing. I know.
Blows my mind.
Full carton there is pretty.
And the restaurant right next to it where people eat, that's, there's always a.
And then you go to Trader Joe's and play bumper cars.
I know. And I don't, why we don't follow that model is, is, it puzzles me. Why we shouldn't, why we shouldn't embellish that concept in here.
Well, I think that that's part of what this is talking about, is trying to improve that and to try to work toward that.
Last time this subject came up, last time, you were trimming it back. You were, you were.
I, it's been tried, and I think that that's unfortunate. It would be great to have that here. I mean, would.
I think the topic is ripe for it.
Talk about, talk about creating something that would be green. If we had a Whole Foods and a Trader Joe's here, we wouldn't all have to drive to Portland. Think of the gas it would save.
A market basket, the market basket in Bitterford put Shaw's out of business.
Market basket would be amazing.
Isn't it amazing, huh?
You can't find who to write to.
All right, so why isn't somebody doing it here in Lewiston? Why isn't that, why isn't that happening? Why isn't that taking place? With the investors?
They are advertising here, but I've tried to write to them, because I'm always writing to these people. And you can't find an address for them.
You just gotta write to RDT. Arthur T. Demoulis.
I guess his address isn't out there. Believe me, I'll write to him if. You gotta ask. If you don't ask, he'll never get it.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, that.
Really, how it works.
It would be great to have a market basket here.
Their prices are fantastic.
Yeah, they literally.
They're in Bitterford, right?
They literally drove the Shaw's store that was up the street to close.
I'm familiar with it, yeah.
It's amazing to think that.
I spent a hundred.
Get Misty on that.
I spent a hundred and fifty-one dollars down there a week ago Sunday.
Were there markets?
And then I went with the, with the shopping list and went to Haniford and Shaw's.
Two fifty.
And when I can save two dollars on a pound, well, I bought ham for five ninety-nine, the exact same brand at Haniford was nine ninety-nine a pound. You tell me I can't save money.
You can't. You obviously can't. Yeah. That's a great company.
Well, I've, I've got kids in Massachusetts, they use Market Basket. They shop exclusively with Market Basket.
They get on it.
I know. We say the same thing upstairs. We think the market's perfect for it here, and it's just a matter of time, you know? Part of the delay, because they were looking at me expanding, and then they had that whole employee strike going on, so.
They're looking at Auburn.
I think they're revisiting, you know, where they are.
Everybody's looking at Auburn. Never mind Auburn.
They've got a good handle on that, though, now.
I would think, I mean.
They've got a handle on that, because I know.
I think the only problem was what happened, because they had to buy each other out, and they had to settle the family feud.
There was a dispute on the corporate level. That's where, that's where that came from.
There sure was. And I think what they did is they put a lot of their expansion plans on hold while they tried to stabilize the financial condition of the company.
Yeah, I think they resolved that, though.
Well, they resolved it, but I'm sure it put a binder on what they're able to do as far as expanding, at least temporarily.
Yeah, because of buyout, because of a buyout.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, the fact that the stores were closed for like, what, almost sixty days? The vast majority of the stores were closed, the revenue stream just collapsed.
Well, they didn't close one in Massachusetts, it's in, in, in Andover. They kept that one open. Employees stayed on the site.
Now, a lot of them were either closed or drastically scaled out.
Yeah, I'm just saying, Andover stayed open.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Is there anything else that's, the, the crowdsourcing thing? I'm not familiar enough with that to know whether that's something that the city should be trying to promote. Seems to me that that just becomes a, crowdsourcing, to me, becomes a private enterprise function rather than a public function. It's near the bottom, Dave, of sixteen. Near the bottom of sixteen. Reprogram yards into home gardens. I'm not sure about that one.
Yeah, I agree with that. I don't.
So all of those little lots that are now open on Lincoln Street?
Gardens. Gardens, lots of them.
Maybe, it's, maybe the thing to do is to take those little lots that are available on Lincoln Street, start growing pot now that it's legal.
There's a lot of money there.
What's the major impediment into developing Coddles property? Why is that just sitting there for as long as it is?
He wants two million dollars for it, Paul.
Is that what it is? I thought there might have been covenants on it or something.
He wants two million dollars for it.
That's really what it is?
He wants two million dollars for it.
I heard you. I heard you.
That's what it is.
Yeah, I don't know if it's two million, but he's, he, the owner is the impediment to it. He's asked for percentage sales of the, of the, from the businesses there. You know, McDonald's has looked at it and said, great, you know, I want X percent of your revenue. McDonald's is like, we don't do that.
That has got to be the worst eyesore in Sabates.
It's the second worst eyesore. The worst eyesore, you finally get torn down, the Sunoco Station, after how many years?
Well, how'd they do that? How'd they manage to do that?
We condemned that one, actually. Yeah, and that, that's why I say, I mean, I wasn't really joking. I mean, Coddles will come to a list sometimes, where it's gonna be repaired or demolished.
But Dave, is behind that, doesn't Haniford own that property, not Garson?
Haniford owns almost probably twenty feet off the back of that building. They own a ten-acre site that goes all the way from Coddles all the way over to Farwell.
And I'm sure, I'm sure there'll be some contingency that you cannot open up a grocery store there. I'm only about, if I owned it.
Not, no, non-competitive clause or something like that?
They, they wouldn't have any control of the Garson site.
Right, but.
Everything behind it, they might well have. They, they might.
And, and Haniford is, I mean, they've approached him as well, you know, they, they. Lincoln and I have talked with the reps from Haniford, because they've been asking, what can we do with our property? You know, it's zone residential. If it's ten acres, eight of it's residential, and the rest of it is, is commercial.
That goes all the way back to Charles Street?
Yep. Yeah, it's, I mean, it's actually, it screams commercial and residential development there. I mean, you could do something really neat there.
That's, that's got to break soon. That, that can't stay the way it is. That can't keep the way it is. That, that building's a death trap.
It's gotta be.
The basement was full of water at one point.
Well, that's right. I was aware of that.
It has to be torn down.
We're not sure anybody's feeding the alligators.
We can issue them an order to repair or demolish, and that's, that's what we did with the Sunoco Station. And, you know, choice is obvious at that point.
Yeah, but we, we paid for the tear down of the Sunoco Station.
Right, yeah. But he, I think he reimbursed us for it, though.
I would think, I would think if he still owns the property. And it's a separate part. He still owns the property?
He does, yeah. The, the Sunoco was a separate part from the, uh.
Right.
Of the cost.
Okay, well, I'm sorry I brought that up, but I was curious this to.
Yeah, no, it's everybody, everybody has the same concerns, Paul. It's just like, and it, we've had the conversations.
So you must have a tax commitment on the building. And the yard's breaking up badly.
He, historically, Mr. Garson comes in at the eleventh hour to pay his taxes on the third year they do.
From two and a half years ago, right?
Yeah. And he's got a, I mean, it's just, it's bewildering to us, because he's paying.
There is no revenue, but he's paying.
And he's got a hefty stormwater fee on it, too. I want to say between twenty and thirty thousand dollars a year, I think, is his commitment to that property. You know, including taxes and stormwater. It's something in that sense.
That's why he wants his two million dollars, I guess.
So, it, it'll happen. I mean, it's just.
Someday he'll die.
That's, that's always what I think. Someday he'll die. And then the kids will sell it just like that.
And they may, they may, you know? I almost think it's, I think it might actually be the heirs of now, like it's, you know.
Oh, really? Well, geez.
Is that why the sign went up?
Uh, maybe. I mean, it's, I don't know. I mean, he's still alive. He's, he's fully capable and cognizant and everything like that. But I think he's, you know, divesting his interests and things like that.
Protecting the Lake Auburn watershed, we really don't have much say in that. That's the law pack. That's a requirement to stave off a sixty-million-dollar filtration plant. I can't imagine that we're not going to continue to do that. That's just, that would be, would be crazy not to support that whole mission. Unite as one community with one voice, page eighteen.
I'll call it out right now on the third one. I know I will be changing the word new Americans, so.
Hiring preferences at the high school. Number two. Just positive education in general.
Was that a question, Mike?
Uh, sort of. Is that even legal? You're presidencies minorities and immigrants and seeking new teachers. Presidencies. I don't see how to do that.
Yeah, that's, um.
Yeah, that, that's a lawsuit. We're gonna have to. It's affirmative action is what it is. Right. I mean, it can be phrased differently.
First of all, you need the certificate, so.
That one doesn't seem to be worded very well, that one, Dave. I think that that's probably one that.
They work with local education programs to encourage minorities and immigrants.
Exactly, exactly. I was just gonna suggest that.
That's good, Mike, I think.
Like to encourage.
To encourage minorities and seeking new teachers.
And minorities. I'm not even sure. Minorities. I'm not even sure you need the word immigrants.
Yeah, I would leave out immigrants, too.
You don't need immigrants. Minorities is, I think it's all encompassing, really, and even more.
More new Americans in a few years will be...
Well, we were using the term-
I'm already one.
I think we agreed to change the term "new Americans" to "recent immigrants."
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. So, I've made a note here that, and hopefully I'm gonna catch them all.
Recent?
Recent immigrants. So, we could have that, say, "Work with local education programs to encourage minorities and recent immigrants." Or it could just be immigrants and I would suggest that, I mean, because the next one, the next bullet down talks about making a documentary on Lewiston's, I guess, new immigrants or recent immigrants, excuse me.
Oh, immigrant history. I think they, in that case, they mean all immigrants.
I think they do mean all immigrants, because this is what the city is made of. So, I don't think there it means just recent.
Recent.
I don't think so, but I don't know.
So, what are we doing with the second one? Work with the local schools. It's to encourage?
Encourage minorities and immigrants.
Minorities.
Seek teaching.
Bruce, in the narrative, and I wasn't here. I was on vacation when this was done, create a documentary on Lewiston's immigrant history. And it seems to be just talking about the Somali immigration. And I think that really sort of, again, makes a select point of view or class of the other immigrants, the Francos that came down from Canada, the immigrants from Ireland, the Lithuanians that came to this community, sort of, if it's an afterthought.
Yeah, we talked-
And that was on 210, 211.
Yeah. We talked some about that time, although I don't know that we made any real adjustments to it. Well, under engaging the immigrants in teaching roles, there was a, the New American Survival Skills and the Habit of Frugality can be an asset to anyone who is struggling financially. I think that was all struck. I think that that was just, that was a strikeout and, uh...
What page are you on?
210.
210. Okay, so you struck that out?
Pretty sure, right, Dave?
I didn't bring my notes down, my handwritten notes. I didn't have it written in my hard copy, but maybe that's in my handwritten notes.
Yeah, I think that that was a strikeout. That's what I had.
What paragraph are you looking at?
Uh, 210 on the left-hand side, near the bottom, engage immigrants in teaching roles, the last sentence.
Okay. And New Americans are gonna teach me about frugality.
I think we're all pretty good at that. Just living here, you know?
My parents grew up in the Great Depression.
Yeah, so did my father.
No true words spoken by a simple man, right, Mike?
Father's a rolling stone.
See, I put down the generalized film on immigration.
So, we're gonna modify, we're gonna modify the engage the immigrants in teaching roles? Are we gonna do something with the documentary? Because actually, isn't there, isn't there already an existing documentary through the, uh, through Museum LA about a lot of this?
Yeah, that was, you brought up Sandy, I was-
There is. I just can barely remember it, but there's something.
Seems to me that the, really the start or the foundation of that whole thing currently already exists in Museum LA.
But, I mean, they're talking about create a documentary. Who's gonna do that? It says a local nonprofit. In general, that's, I mean, those things cost thousands of dollars. Do you know that's...
Well, maybe we can get a deal from Craig. Maybe we can get Craig Sattlemeyer to do it on the budget plan. He's frugal.
There you go. Work on that.
Put Bruce Beaman under other?
Sure, sure, why not?
Yes. Under provide academic support, it says local nonprofits, but don't you think, uh, excuse me.
I'm sorry?
It says economic and community development, which seems sort of weird to me. Under provide academic support, you go over, it says economic and community development. Shouldn't Lewiston School Department and maybe other nonprofits be involved in that rather than economic and community development?
Actually, I would suggest, you're probably right, Pauline, because when you go back to the text, it talks about an opportunity for Tree Street to work with Lewiston Adult Dad and other local colleges.
So, you're saying take out economic and community development, correct?
Uh, at a minimum, under other, I would be adding Lewiston School Department and other educational institutions or something to that effect. I don't know that it should be economic community development. That doesn't...
Well, it does seem like-
The only thing I'm thinking is if we were to apply for grants like we would under All Things Green and Healthy, there could be grants that we're applying for, but...
That's true.
Usually, we don't, we've been involved in grants for all things green and healthy or playgrounds and things like that. We haven't really been involved in, I would say, educational ones. I mean, we are, from a lead perspective.
That's not true. It was at one point with L.A. Arts.
Was it?
When it was the after-school program. Helped write it. I forget the name of the guy here, but...
So, it might not be, I mean, I see that's how the city would participate if we did, would be, and we do that often with grants, is we'll be one of the partners involved in the grants. It's, you know, some housing initiative we tie in with CEI, main state housing in the city.
But somebody else administers it or something. That's true.
Now, I'm thinking community development block grant, Tree Street does get money from us.
Yeah. So, it's that type of...
Oh, from CEI.
They get about $17,000.
Tree Street?
They get a chunk of money.
Yeah.
Anything else you want to add to that?
At the bottom, Immigrants Day, there is already one and it's celebrated. I went to it.
So, it's already there, so it's just to continue to support it, so. Page 20, transformation, provide reliable services and municipal transparency.
Great Falls TV.
Well, Great Falls, well, that's the thing. I mean, where does that stand, Dave? Was Auburn going to seize it and take it for their own?
I haven't heard anything new. I don't know anything about that.
That was the last word we ever heard, right?
Yeah. But I can tell you, when I mentioned that to administration, that we're gonna have the comp plan meetings on YouTube, there was no opposition to that at all, thinking that that could be an avenue to provide people to view these things going forward. So, I don't know if that's gonna gain legs or not for other meetings and what, but...
YouTube.
Yeah. So, you go online?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and it's there forever versus if you go on Great Falls TV, they have limited capacity as far as...
Goes away quickly, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, library.
And that could change in the future. Right now, YouTube's free and I can put a 13-hour meeting on there. It's not a challenge, you know, just...
Please. The other, as we go down through this, I mean, the community report card. Who's, I mean, the community report card, is that self-examination by individual departments? Or is, or how does that?
Let me see how that was worded.
I was gonna say, that one seemed to me to be...
We noted in there that we changed some language that says Lewiston already prepares a monthly administrators' report that's available. Then, you know, the recommendation still was to mark it and expand that report card. So...
However, it also talked about setting aside budget for it, which is probably, probably that's a pipe dream.
Yeah, well, it talks about, I mean, because the budget would be, they're talking about whether or not that report card would result in the need for additional studies, which are very well made. That's where the budget portion of it's coming in.
Right.
I mean, that's, which is accurate. If we chose to do that and we start doing these assessments of some sort and we find out that, no different than you folks making a recommendation on like form-based codes or something like that. Okay, that's a good idea. We need to start thinking about how we're gonna pay for that or implementation of the comp plan.
Yep.
You know, the thought crossed my mind, David. A lot of this stuff is really good, but in order for it to have any practical effect, we need administrative support.
Yeah, you folks-
And you can't just be it. You can't just be the go-to guy for everything. There's gotta be administrative support. How is that happening?
Well, I mean, you folks took an action several meetings ago to, you know, try to fund another position, you know, in part because of this document.
Any feedback on that, by the way?
Um, actually, Ed told us to include it in the budget next time, so at least it'll be in there. But he also said, you know, when the bigger discussion happens about, you know, tax increases and all the other expenses that the city has, he'll be shocked if it stays in there.
Ask him to cut back on his land, baby.
You guys can do that when the LCIP comes forward. You can make that recommendation, you know?
No, but I mean, we need administrative support. If there's genuine concern here for viable economic growth here in Lewiston, and these are important aspects.
And I know Ed recognizes that. I think the current council recognizes that. I don't know what's gonna happen, you know, come January when we have new members and whatnot.
It's a big deal.
They'll have at least three new members, right?
Well, you know, the comprehensive plan's not gonna change.
It's three that have already said they won't run.
No, it's just my, my point is it's a steep learning curve for those folks.
Yeah, it really is.
You know, the timing stinks.
The council, yes.
Then there's no, they haven't heard it. They're starting to read it. They've got people talking at them.
Right. And that's where administrative support comes in. If Ed is on the scene, hopefully he's not, you know, planning a change.
Not that I'm aware of.
You know? Is the assistant, does the administrator plan a change anytime soon?
Who's that?
Assistant.
Not that I'm aware of, but...
But I don't wanna ha-ha the rest of what I'm saying here because I know this is kind of a little tongue-in-cheek, but the point is, we need administrative support. You know, look at the time that we're taking to examine this document and to see it to fruition, you know? We need strong administrative support. And I don't, I don't see the change in council as being a deal-breaker. Yeah, it might create a difficult transition, but you move forward. With administrative, you don't change administration the way you change council.
As I suggested before, I think you need the board's support and I think you need citizen's support to force the discussion to occur. If you folks are silent to the plan going forward, it's not gonna become a priority for anyone, just like the Riverfront Plan. People are still excited about the Riverfront Plan. That's why the council continues to support it and stick it through.
But you have to see who's on there. And who makes that happen? That's my point.
The squeaky wheel at the end of the day.
So, yeah.
So, you know, at least the board makes the recommendations to the council, whether they think about it for two seconds or 20 minutes, but at least they have to acknowledge it. Yep, we got it. And if they want to throw it on the floor as soon as they see it, that's fine, but at least you folks are having the conversation to move it along out there. And a lot of times, they look at it and they do something. If they did it with the Riverfront, they recognize that, you know?
I also think personally, my opinion is if we could go forward, especially with the new council and perhaps have a couple of workshops with them on some subjects, especially to get the new ones up to speed, it might be helpful and peaceful.
I think administrative support is pivotal. And I don't want to be redundant here, but the administration has a responsibility to get behind this document. This is, this is a legal document, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, yes.
Paid the perspective, absolutely.
Well, then it's the responsibility of all administrative personnel to, who work directly or indirectly with this to move it forward.
We had quite a bit of administrative interaction and support as we built the document. Ed, Gil, David, Link, a lot of those folks were definitely involved in the, particularly in the think-tank sessions and directly in communication with as we built this. So, and I think in general, I think Ed is very much in support of this document.
Ed was very.
I'm not suggesting otherwise.
No, 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 I really don't.
No, 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 Ed. No one took it that way.
Yeah, no.
But you're right. Continued support of the administration, whether it be this administration or the future administrations, it's imperative.
I think my concept of how this whole thing works is pretty, is, I've got a workable concept and it all comes back to administration.
I would agree with you. At the end of the day, they're the ones that are gonna make the decision how and how aggressively and what things we're gonna pursue. And, you know, they're either gonna oppress upon me to bring certain things to you, or they're gonna oppress upon the council for certain things to happen. You folks and the council can initiate that, but it's more likely to just start from the top down saying, "Okay, this is done. I think we should be doing these types of things." If they don't do that, you folks in the council and the public for that matter can make that happen as well.
On, Ed, this, well, Pauline, go ahead.
Under, have we got down to improve solid waste collection and disposal yet?
I don't think we're quite down there yet, but the one that I wanted to hit, and then we'll come right down that one, was the third one, use the Planet Palooza process regularly. That's a, it worked under, it worked for that particular exercise, but those folks are very skilled at running that. It took a lot of coordination and a lot of effort over a very short period of time to actually do that. I'm not convinced that with the limited resources that the city has available from staff perspective, that that's something that could be employed very often. I think it could, it's just, you know...
What do they mean by it? Do you know? I mean, like, is there a for instance that comes up in your mind? I'm trying to figure out where they are.
Well, you know, I mean, can you imagine if we tried to have a Planet Palooza about bike lanes on Lower Lisbon Street?
Actually, that was kind of an example I was thinking, or even parking. I mean, that would be, that would be an interesting one to do where you do this event and you have everybody sit down.
But isn't that somehow, in a way, I'm not sure I don't disagree, isn't that somehow the way you, you get to understand each other's sides? Maybe you do have to have a mediator. I would imagine that could be the Chamber of Commerce president. That could be John Holden. That sometimes, because otherwise you can never get compromise if you don't sit in a room together and talk it out, because you don't see each other's... I don't know, Bruce, I...
Yeah, and, and, and I, I just-
Not all the time, maybe for certain real hot-button topics like that, it'd derail everything.
Well, I mean, I don't think, I don't think you necessarily derail everything. I just think that it takes an incredible amount of effort to organize it. And if you're gonna do it regularly, it's gonna be, I don't know what your thought was, Dave. I mean, you lived through that.
Well, I guess it just depends on the size and the scale of it. And I mean, that was a community-wide event where we were trying to get a lot of people together and covering a lot of topics. You could do something on a smaller scale. I mean, and instead of us coming forward, if we know we have a controversial item ahead of us here and having that debate in front of the planning board here where people are learning about it for the first time. I mean, we could have a Callaway UOL, a Planet Palooza, a charrette, or we could have a meeting and say, "Hey, if anybody cares about parking, whether you think we have enough or a shortage or whatnot, let's sit down and we're gonna talk about it. We'll have these bullet items." And maybe to your point, Sandy, you kind of need a moderator.
You do need one.
Almost someone like not a staff person. Almost someone, like, not a staff person, you know, you, you know, you need that third party almost to do that.
Really?
I, I think so.
Yeah.
Because.
I think there were people that would even, I mean, you get your Chip Morrison, that type of person, I think would be willing to come in.
You know, I went to one where Shayna Rogers did it when, when Shayna was over here.
Shayna, yeah, I think Shayna's very good.
You know, I didn't always agree with what she had to say about, you know, housing policies and things like that. She was awesome at running a meeting.
She's fantastic at running a meeting.
She did a great job. It was right after the fires.
Yeah, I mean, she was.
She did a great job.
I was, you know, I went up to her and, you know, high-fived her. So, to have somebody run a meeting like that where everybody can kind of agree to disagree type thing, and from my perspective, I can sit there and take a million notes and everything to help draft something, there probably is value in doing that. Because right now, it's.
I don't have a problem with it.
You know, it's staff and it's listening to you folks and listening to us upstairs thinking, we think this is a good idea, let's try to bring it to the board and see what happens. Sometimes it goes smoothly, other times it doesn't.
I.
But to your point, also Bruce, yeah, if we wanted to do something big and bold.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna take more time. And, and maybe, you know, like a form-based code. If we do something by a block scenario, that's probably gonna be a lot easier. If all of a sudden we said, oh, we wanted to fill in form-based code for like the Santraville District, all of the greater downtown area.
You're likely to see the results, rather than the broader effort that.
Possibly.
Can become complicated.
And, and from my perspective, I mean, what I like about it is that maybe we're getting some people actually engaged in the process. Nobody shows up for these things. I mean, you know, and it's tough to get people interested in this type of stuff.
I mean, I think we've seen that example happen all too often, when MDOT proposes a project and three people show up.
Exactly. And then everybody complains about it afterwards.
And then they're upset afterwards, right, right, so.
So, I'm not sure that, that, how effective it would, I guess it's, you, you get the people that really care because it's in front of their doorstep.
Well, exactly, and that's the criticism we have with the Planet Palooza too, is that, you know, we had, you know, seventy-five percent of the people represented twenty-five percent of the population, you know.
It's kinda how things are, but you gotta try. I, I think you still have to do it.
Well, we can leave it, we can leave it in there. I just, you know, I think that it's, it's, it's gonna be challenging to, to, to be able to pull it off on a regular basis.
I sound like a broken record, but I, I think it's just another tool in the box that at least maybe makes us think about using it later. Maybe we don't.
That's kinda where I'm going with it.
But certainly if you guys wanna change something.
Now, Pauline, improved solid waste collection and disposal, that was your, that was your.
Yeah, I, I can wait till we get through the rest. I mean, I just have a concern.
It's, it's gonna take time to get it, there's any.
Is, ah, how accurate is that? It's forty, it's a forty-year. I mean, they're talking pay to throw, and I don't even wanna get into that debate. But my understanding is, is that if things don't change drastically with how we're doing our trash collection and our recycling, that forty-year landfill, especially if, if MWAQ goes fairly up or closes, that the time period of forty years is way too generous. It's, it's likely to be a ten or twelve-year period. Isn't that true?
I don't know exactly. I mean, I know, I mean, it talks about at current disposal rates, so assuming nothing changes, I believe that's accurate. But there's, there's variables. Yeah, you're right. MWAQ closes, we got a problem.
There's a big difference between ash and.
Solid waste, right, exactly.
Big difference between ash and trash. Huge.
I guess I would sort of, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but I think someone looking at this, oh, we've forty years, I'm not worried about it, I'm gonna be dead and gone.
You're saying you worry about it before that.
Well, it's, it's, I mean, if you look back historically, there was a, there was an opportunity for Casella to take over the landfill, and they predicted that, um, that it, it might last six or eight years if they were in charge of it. Then there was a discussion that if it was only ash, that it might last two hundred years because of the reduced volume of it. And now it's something in between that, and it's a moving target, obviously, and it, as, if zero-stream recycling could actually become effective, what'd we see, Dave, the other day? Is it eight percent?
Eight point seven.
Yeah, it's miserable.
It's ridiculous. When Eileen was here, it was higher than that, wasn't it?
When who was here?
Eileen. She ran the, before, uh, the guy that was in charge of the trash, the shredder plant before, uh.
Yeah, I don't know, it's Rob Stalford now, and.
Rob Stalford, yep, is, uh, I think her name is Eileen, anyway.
I mean, we had a re, I, I think I mentioned when, fifteen years ago, we had a recycling coordinator.
Right.
In the city, who, you know, it was all about outreach and education and stuff like that.
And I think the rates were higher then than they are now.
Yeah, they were, yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, my understanding is, you know, and, and I agree, I, I don't know enough about paper bag to get into the discussion about it, other than the communities that've done it, they see an increase in recycling, just because all of a sudden there's a cost, a real cost with it, for better, for worse, you know. So, are we looking, are, are we questioning something here, or do we have a concern, or?
Well, I just, I just think that it's rose-colored glasses that our landfill is gonna last forty years. And I, I can remember attending the meetings when Casella was gonna take over the landfill, and they couldn't do the meeting here. I mean, the multipurpose center at the time was packed.
Right, and the acoustics are incredibly poor.
Correct. And, and I just think, you know, it needs to take on, if we're gonna have a document that we wanna have some good figures, I think I, I would like to have that clarified.
And shouldn't, um, to me, improving the solid waste collection and disposal piece of this, one of the players in this should be the school department.
Totally.
I had that written down.
You did. You mentioned that.
Yep, we added that, actually.
That's a big deal.
So, we need to make sure that that's.
And we'll make, yeah, we'll add it here as well.
'Cause there's phrases that we remember, give a, give a hoot, don't pollute, don't be a litter bug. I mean, we all remember those commercials and being taught that in school. Don't be a litter bug.
Sure, yeah, yeah, you know, I, you know, and then, and you see the, just, well. Well, I mean, Public Works is in here. I mean, Public Works and the city council are here, but I think the school department has to be an integral piece of that. The education component of that is how it's gonna change. It's not gonna change just because it's in here.
Can you sum this up?
So, this, could the city engineers help us out with that? They would be able to, I know Vernum had a, seemed to have a grasp.
What I can do is, um, I may have done this already, but I, I'll, I can do it again, 'cause there's certain sections in here where I've deferred to those departments or staff that are, know what they're talking about. I can send that section of language to, to Rob Stalford and just say, hey, is this accurate? If you had, if you wanted to word it, how would you word it? And we can see where it goes from there.
That's a good idea.
Good suggestion.
Come back to, uh, on, on page twenty-two, near the bottom, continue support implementation of the Kennedy Park Master Plan. I think that's the one that we had determined that the estimated budget for the implementation of Kennedy Park was one point seven five million dollars. Much of that, I know, got slashed this year, although, um, that's a tough one. That's an awful lot of money for what we think we're gonna get out of that. It is a signature element of the downtown, undoubtedly.
Hope you folks noted the gazebo bandstands finally under construction up there.
Yeah, I noticed that.
As far as smart paint and supporting the Riverfront Master Plan, I think that's all. We, I think this, this body's all in favor of that. At least I hope that we're there. And everybody understands about the city's ISO rating, as we've gone through that before, so, that's good.
It's the vocabulary in the description, sorry. I think a few is in the text.
I think maybe.
Why it's not like the beginning either.
It, just to, just define what the ISO means, Dave.
Okay.
I think that that's, yeah, I think Mike is right.
Like, right after a parentheses and then the full extension for the three words. That's helpful.
Under the Semaine Park, last line, add temporary seasonal concession and/or vendor structures. Everything that's done in there is done by, uh, volunteer groups or fundraiser groups. Why should the city be involving adding something like that?
Uh, I think part of what we talked about, and, and maybe not necessarily structures, although, obviously, at some point, as that continues to become more developed, potentially maybe some, uh, permanent, uh, restroom facilities.
Yeah, well, that I could see.
That, and, uh, we are adding some, uh, electrical infrastructure in this next phase, which will be helpful. And there is gonna be the, uh, the, uh, what would you call it, Dave? The flat, the, the amphitheater, uh, infra, the, the colored tarp over the amphitheater.
Can, can.
Yeah, we're not doing that at this point.
Doing that at this point, right?
I visualized popcorn stands and.
Oh, popcorn stand, no, I, well, yeah, I, I think they drive that over there, so.
That, that came, Norm, that came from, I mean, that's basically a, a repeated recommendation that was from the Riverfront Master Plan.
Yeah.
As a result of that, they were talking about, you know, does it make sense to have some more permanent presence down there, even if it's just, whether it's a building that had vendors in it type thing, or just a better setup to accommodate vendors down there. Could be either one, 'cause people were kind of on the fence at the time, and that was going through, like, do we really wanna have a building down there and rent it out to people? Or do we wanna have like a designated area where people can set up type thing? But to at least consider exploring that if it moves forward.
The food truck industry in Portland, um, has grown tremendously, and they add Freewill Park in, in the areas of some of the, of the local parks, down in Lincoln Park, down through, um, Deering Oaks. You know, food trucks set up, and they set up at various times a day, um.
The advantage they have there is they have people during the week.
Catering service, I mean, the catering.
People in Semaine Park Park. Now, up here, it might be different. If they were up here more like, well, you stop to think about the Brunswick thing. How many years has Danny's Hot Dogs been in front of the, right there on Main Street in Brunswick?
They have several.
You know, there's three or four of them there. I mean, they've been there for as long as I can ever remember. You know, but that probably wouldn't happen in Semaine Park Park at this point, 'cause there's just not enough people down there yet.
Yeah, I mean, it depends. If you market it as like Wednesdays is food truck day in the park or something. People will drive to it to go get a taco or something like that.
The idea of a, like, the guy that was selling hot dogs on the corner here, all I see that as a, you know, you get a taxpayer over here that has a property, Simone's. It's a tax, you know, pays taxes and has a business selling hot dogs, and he's competing with this guy here who closes his doors and goes home at night.
Yeah, that's wrong, but it's, yeah, that's part of the food trucks.
It's a piece of it. That's a piece of the food truck industry, for sure. Now, whether or not what, what this would maybe be is, is a, a more permanent foundation area for, so that when they do have concessions there, that they're working on a hard surface instead of in the mud.
Yeah.
Could be even just, you know, you know, water and sewer and access or something like that.
Yeah, okay, that, that I can see.
Without it necessarily being a full-blown structure, I would almost think that something like that might make more sense. Because what it does is it starts to define which area of the park sort of you're always gonna find that in, which is eas, sometimes is easier too.
We're, we may, um, be bringing them, actually, we don't really regulate it, um, zoning and land use, but we have license requirements right now for roving diners, which applies to food trucks. And there's a couple of people that are interested in trying to create some more flexibility for food trucks. Right now, to, to your concern, Norm, you have to be at least a hundred feet away from any other food service establishment. That's even, um, prepackaged type establishment, so I can be at Cumberland Farms, and I have to be a hundred feet away from the property, not necessarily the door. So, like, putting a hot dog stand here, you're a hundred feet away from Simone's, for better, for worse.
You said, you said something earlier that, that I really thought made a lot of sense, is to have it like one Wednesday night or something like that one day a week. That I could see, then that would generate a lot of traffic, I think.
It, it may, and, and one of the things that they're talking about is right now, you can't set up on the street unless it's for a special event. And some of these folks would like to set up on the street, um, short of a special event like the art festival. They just wanna, hey, Tuesday, and I wanna be on Park Street in this parking spot. Can I do that? Right now, you can't, so, that's really, right now, it's a license issue regulated by the police department.
Well, like the Good Humor guy.
He's just driving around.
He parks on the street and.
Well, doesn't.
Probably hard to catch.
He parks, he parks when he sees a bunch of kids running out and then he kicks off.
Well, Auburn has done, and I hate to, Auburn, but they have Festival Plaza. Every Wednesday night, the Auburn Community Band plays. And Pinky D sets up his food truck over there, and he did a fairly decent business from wa, you know, watching Wednesday night, people going over. I mean, so those sorts of things are.
Yeah, those are good ideas.
They're, they're good ideas. I mean, it's, it's there, it's convenient.
Sure, help drive neurals out of business.
It's a new place now. Now it's called Two of Seven.
That's the flip side, that's, we do.
Never puts Simone's out of business.
No, no, I understand, and I was just using that as an example.
But the thing is, is, you know, my wife and I go to Portland often, and there's, there's food carts on Commercial Street, every corner, and where we, you know, we end up at Three Dollar Dooies, you know? I mean, it, the, the, the thing is, you know, the food carts are, are helpful if you're on the run, eating on the run. Who wants to eat on the run?
Not everybody's gonna do that.
You know?
Like they're talking, like, you wanna close Lisbon Street here when you have the art thing on Friday nights, or whatever Friday night it is. You allow food carts in there. Now you're competing with the guys on the street that have their restaurants.
Yeah, but it's different. It's, it's so different. Norm, I, I really.
That's my point.
Because a bunch of us are trying to get together and do a street festival, that's one of the things.
That, that's, yeah, it's.
It, there, I don't think, I, I think the people that are down there with their kids are not gonna go into Martian Fuel.
No, 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 I, yeah.
That's the point.
But, but I know where you're getting at too, because I have business, so I get it. I, I think it, I think it actually just brings more people. It just brings more people, I think, eventually.
And they spend more and they, they eat on the run.
Yeah, it's, things are happening. When Bill Maine, the Bill Maine Conference was here, and they put together, LEGC with the Bill Maine people put together, they brought in food trucks, they put it together like in a week. I know who ran up, one of them called me and said, how are we gonna get these permits? I said, you better get your butt down to City Hall now. And they put that together in eight days, seven days. You should've seen all the people on Smart Paint. It was fabulous. People were pouring out of those. And a lot of people from out of town were here for the conference, and they're walking up going, this is great.
Yeah.
So, it is.
You leave it up to the buyer, however he wants to eat.
Even, go to the balloon festival, and I'm one of these silly people who was down there at five thirty, six o'clock in the morning, 'cause it's a great photo opportunity.
It's better in the morning.
Try getting a cup of coffee. Can't buy a cup of coffee at the, on, on grounds. That little Tom Donuts that's up at Fryberg Fair, that guy would make a million bucks parking his little truck right there on Lincoln Street.
Should be able to be done.
So, is that what Dave's gonna do in his retirement?
No, he buys the donuts. He eats the donuts. Doesn't make, he doesn't make the donuts.
Doesn't make the donuts.
He just eats the donuts, eats the donuts. Somebody's gotta eat the donuts.
But you're right. I mean, there, it is a changing market in the food trucks, if we could organize, again, can, can you organize that? So, first of all, you don't wanna be in direct competition with the farmer's market, so if you could coordinate that so that you weren't in competition with them, that might. you weren't in competition with them, that might make perfect sense.
There's no, at the farmer's market, and we attend Sundays that we're here, you can't buy, you can't buy hot food, to eat a sandwich there, everything, it's, it's, it's pack and go.
It'd be great if there was.
It would be great if you could get some locally sourced food, you know, ready to eat, that you could eat right there.
Yeah.
And there's, and there's not.
No, that's right.
You know, my, my son bought a farm in, in Sumner, and he's farming with a, a, a neighbor who markets all his free, his open range, his free range chicken in Portland, they go there every week, they make a killing over there, they make a killing, why don't they come to Lewiston, they don't have one?
Yes, we do.
Not consistently.
Every Sun, every Sunday from ten to one, down at Mill Five, you can buy free range chicken, and you can buy beef, you can buy pork, you can buy eggs, vegetables. Every Sunday.
How long, but how's, he's looked, I think, I know he's looked into Lewiston, and there's a reason why he won't come, he doesn't, he doesn't feel it's, huh?
Couple of years, but it's getting bigger and bigger.
Yeah.
Bet he can sell it from more in Portland, if he's selling like...
Oh, exactly.
He's got his chicken, he's got, he raises pork and all kinds, and he smokes pork, and he's got, he's got smokers now, and he's doing all kinds of stuff.
Better profit margin in Portland, probably.
Well, same with the, the, what is it, the CSA's over there in Lisbon, that the Somalis grow on and whatnot, they go to Portland several times a week, too.
Little field, yeah, little fields, probably.
They're going down there to sell product, I mean, they sell some here, too, but they make that...
Well, that's good, I'm glad, because, you know, you can't do it all in Portland, you've gotta, gotta service the people of Lewiston and create the market here.
So, I think we're to, I believe we are to the last page, twenty-four and twenty-five. I mean, I think that, you know, here, it's, I know LAAC has done a bit of a turnaround, and there's some new enthusiasm and some new blood over there, which, hopefully, one of their missions, and I think it's part of the contract that they signed with the two cities, is to provide a lot of this, that wasn't in place at the time the consultant started to write this, so I think some of this is a little bit dated, I mean, if it hadn't taken quite so long to get this pulled together, this might be more, might be slightly different, but I do think there's a lot of, this is already, and it says it's an immediate one, and I'm not sure that LEGC shouldn't be listed under other, under all, all of this set here.
I completely agree, and possibly even the Chamber or some degree.
Yeah, you folks suggested adding the Growth Council to getting the word out, but certainly, I can add it to other ones, or...
The Chamber as well, yeah.
Yep.
Cause the Chamber's got that image, subcommittee, regional image.
Which is now being rolled into a combination, which I, I'm on that new committee, with LEGC, we just met the first time last week, and, and it is because they've been charged, LEGC's been charged with doing the marketing, unfortunately, there's no budget to do the marketing, however, but it, it's the beginning, and, and I believe, and Matt Leonard was also at the meeting for the Chamber, so I think there's gonna be a lot of discussions, forming committees, and as to which direction it goes in, and who gets hired to do that.
Are they still gonna support Future Forum?
There was a little bit of talk of Future Forum, not last week, but way before, and I, I'm telling you, until last year, I never heard it, it's like the secret society.
If you have never been on the Growth Council, you have never heard of it.
Yeah, and I just joined the Growth Council, so, and I know they've done a lot of good work, so I said, we'll just take their documentation and bring it in, but, so it doesn't have to be duplicative, that you wanna talk about a secret society.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, it's not just me.
No, it's not you, not at all, not at all.
I've said it to many people.
Any other comments on these last couple pages, you know, that...
Michael? Question, but, I should run up earlier, the difference between intermediate and medium term, is there any difference?
Actually, did they, I thought they provided a...
Oh, it's...
Intermediate action should be take...
I think it says, actually says, immediate, not intermediate.
Okay, that, that, now there's a difference in my mind.
And, and on page one of the matrix, they've suggested timelines with that as well.
I've seen intermediate, I mean, classes, and on page twenty-four, third segment down on the natural resources, critical was spelled wrong.
I think the one just above it is one of the ones that we talked quite a bit about, pursue public-private partnerships to protect critical and important natural resources through purchase of land or easements of willing sellers. Not sure that, again, we're talking about pu, public involvement with purchasing land and easements, not sure that, I'm thinking that that's necessarily a good idea, but city is, has enough property and enough engagement with, if they're gonna, if they think something's good, it oughta be, to me, that's...
Well, the, the first example I can think of that was the, what's now the, the Rain Court Preserve.
Yep.
We put together that application for the land, being for land's futures, and we owned that parcel, and then we, we did it over to the land trust, so, I mean, that might be an example where we, we, we work to secure the funding, but we don't necessarily wanna be responsible for the upkeying of it.
Of high margins, the other one that I thought about, the one that smacks me in the head when I see the public-private partnership about purchasing land is the Colosseum.
Well, unless there's like...
How do you manage to get all those issues into one meeting?
Really?
I work at it. I'm practicing, I've, I've been practicing all weekend.
Unless there's a, you know, a vein of oil underneath it, I don't know that we need to worry about a natural resource there, unless you wanna create a natural resource there, maybe, maybe that's your angle, you wanna create a...
You know, I guess, you know, and I'm not sure that we consider Island Point a natural resource, right, at this point?
No, I mean...
It's more of a land, a landfill site, isn't it?
Yeah. There's, there's interest in that again, though, that's, that's...
Really?
People are kicking the tires again.
Anything else anybody's got on this? Dave, you've got a bunch of notes you gotta break down on this thing.
That's right, so my, my goal here is, this document is, I can, I, I'm not sure that you're gonna wanna see the document that I'm producing, but I'll give you copies so you understand what it is I'm producing, it's gonna have a bunch of comment clouds on it, because I've actually talked to Brian recently about this, saying, are you gonna be able to make these changes, or do I have to do it? And actually, he said, well, I'd like to do it, because if there's typos in it, like pubic, that doesn't represent me well, and I wanna be able to correct that, so, he's gonna be able to do a lot of this for me, I just gotta figure out the timing on it, because typos are one thing that we can address ahead of time, but I don't want changes made necessarily, your comments and thoughts need to be shared with the council, basically, to know what's going on here, so, somehow, I'm gonna reduce all of this in a, in a format, but then, at the same time, probably come up with just a document for you folks to review that somehow cross-references this, the goal that it can help you guys form a motion for a recommendation as to all the things we've discussed here.
Are you thinking more like marginella on these things individually, pages, or...
Well, the way I have it, I mean, it's, it's literally, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a Adobe document, it's a PDF document, where I've gone through and highlighted all of the changes, so you can, you can click on it, and you'll see it in another margin, so, it's easy, it's easy if you're looking at it electronically, to print it out, which is what I did the first time, it, it comes up with like an additional page for the comments, so it's, it's not super easy for the, it's easier to see electronically than it is in print, so somehow, I gotta get it to you in print, so it makes some sense as well. The goal of that is, hopefully, I can make that happen for August, and then it's really up to Ed as to whether or not, I want you folks to see it first, and then upon you folks seeing it, have that joint workshop, and then I think, and we can talk about this, how do we pursue that, do we do the joint workshop, and then you folks provide a recommendation, or do you provide the recommendation ahead of time, and then have the joint workshop? I, I tend to think that you would have a recommendation, and then have the workshop, because you could talk through what your recommendations include, any items that were hot topics for you folks, or things that you really want them to consider changing, cause that would actually be part of your, your recommendation then, at that point.
I would think we would wanna make the recommendation first, after we get the markup from you, then that would give the council an opportunity to review it before we just bring it to them.
Yeah, you're right, I mean, ideally, we'd ask them to look at it, so it's not completely...
With them two weeks to mull it over, and some of them will, and some of them may not do too much with it, but at least, they would not be suddenly presented with a two-hundred-and-thirty-five-page document that's...
As Kristen noted, I mean, some of them are very familiar with it, and others of them, maybe the first time they're really looking at it with any, you know, detail.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that that, we should probably make the recommendation to them to accept it as, as, you know, amended, or however you wanna, however you wanna put it, and then let them mull it over a little bit, and then have the joint meeting, I would think.
So, hopefully, this will all happen sometime in August, that's, that's my goal.
That would be good.
And then, ideally, they, council could act on it upon, you know, maybe their second meeting in September, or something like that.
Okay, I would move it.
We do have a regular meeting next Monday, the daycare amendment that I referenced at one point about parking, council did forward that to you folks.
Right.
So, that has been scheduled for a public hearing.
Okay.
And, I think that's all I really have right now on the agenda, oh, yeah, and two and twenty-six Oxford Street.
Is that on the agenda for this meeting, or is that on the agenda for the second meeting of the month?
Uh, that's on the meeting for the twenty-seventh.
Did you send that, did you send that email out, or was it last week or something?
Uh, well, what the resolve was by the council. That's all I got.
As opposed to August tenth?
As opposed to August tenth, correct.
Make the motion.
Is that, is that a recommendation to postpone it to August tenth?
No, I'm just wondering, Dave and I had that discussion.
Really?
As to the setting of the agenda, as to whether August twenty-seventh...
Oh, I see, yeah, right.
July twenty-seventh or August tenth, yeah.
I mean, and, and, yeah, so, that's the plan anyway, at this point, you folks.
The next city council meeting from now is August eleventh?
Correct.
And when does the thirty-day window begin?
Thirty-day window, we actually asked for a legal opinion now, not to make sure we were on solid ground, and the state attorney said, upon the resolve being acted upon, so thirty days started last week.
Last Tuesday.
Is there a closing date scheduled?
Uh, I believe there is, and Lincoln has reached out to them to see if they would be willing to grant an extension, and they're willing to consider it, I think.
An extension?
The, the seller.
So, they already had a closing date?
They had, they had an option, not a closing date, I'm sorry, I should...
Did the city make an offer on the property?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, but there, there's an option on it, so, to clarify, not a closing date, but an option, closing or no, no, closing, we don't, we don't even have the council's approval to buy it.
Is there a value to the option? Usually, options you pay, what?
Something.
Well, you pay a dollar a year.
Oh, it could be a dollar, or, or it was a lot more for the Colosseum.
Doesn't have to have any, I've had options.
I, I have no, I, I will make a note and have that information for you.
They, they, they offered up an option for a dollar a year for Mill Five.
That's right.
Probably, you know, probably the bargain of the century.
Then the sale price would be a dollar, so it was actually two.
Two dollars, wow. Yeah, I see Paul make a motion to adjourn, right, they said second, Paul made the motion, Norm seconded it, all in favor? So moved.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, David, for all the work on this, this is good to move this forward, there's your book, Dave, thank you.
I love your disparate comments for another ten seconds.